All right, thank you everybody for joining what is a special virtual meeting of the Board of Education. We are in the first one, some of the board members and cabinet for the first time since March, so bear with us as we do this. Before we start, just want to point out a few things, the meeting is being conducted to the governor's executive order 7B. We're recording the meeting, it will be posted on our website, public is on via Zoom and right now we've got 120,000 people joining us, thank you very much. So it's a special meeting, I'm going to challenge you to make, and then the community can send email to your 800 by a single email address, As participants, state their name as I speak, please leave, I will not take them because they may not address the room. And for any votes, we'll be doing a roll call. So please, please, I have to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can we move to the meeting agenda? Ms. Hirsch, there's Ms. Stone. I'm going to take a quick roll call, so Bernstein is a yes, Stone?
Yeah.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Paulson? Ms. Paulson?
Yes.
Or Mr. Sher.
Yes.
There was a yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so the next order of our agenda is a consent agenda, we can put some minutes, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Dills is the second. Ms. Hirsch? All right, all those who are in favor, all those who are in favor of approving the consent agenda, if you can roll call, Bernstein's a yes, Stone?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yeah.
Paulson?
Yes.
And Sher.
Abstein.
Okay, that was an extension that passes 701. All right, the next items are discussion items, so the first is reopening elementary and middle school music programs. So Dr. Johnson, can you give us where we are?
Absolutely, I think here's, oh, I have to give our head up. Absolutely, so I think everybody knows that as we are working to reopen schools, it's been an incredible task for all of our leadership team. And very early on, we knew in middle school, trying to be responsive to all of the safety, security aspects of social distancing, trying to cohort, but it was one to max out really spaces in the building. And it was going to take some unique scheduling, and our three middle school principals are here tonight to try and express why we're having general music. I do want to be very clear, we still have music. It's not that we don't have any music in the building, but we are offering the curriculum through general music. So I'll turn it over to the principals, they have a couple of slides, and I hope that it will help understand the complexity. And I will just add, and I know they have this, I think, on our last slide, but we also did post our positions, which we always intended to do, for, to be able to start music after school through virtual, much like we did last year for our athletics at high school. And those were posted on Monday, we're hoping our staff that can do after school virtual in a club type structure can help that so that our kids can continue to play their instruments. So Gordon and Mr. Healy?
And before you, before we start, Aaron, people, people say this.
Okay, let's, let's keep on going, we'll fix it, we'll work as we go.
So I guess the middle school principals want to present.
Hi, good evening everyone, Tom Healy, principal of Central. So basically, as everyone knows, we're here because we're trying to explain a little bit about the challenges with scheduling and some of the decisions that had to be made earlier on in this process. So basically, the first parameter that really provided the struggle for us to build a schedule that fit everything that we used to offer was being tasked with building a schedule that worked in all three scenarios, as we talked about, where we had potentially all of our students in the building, safely distanced, a hybrid model and a fully remote model. When it comes down to the choices that we needed to make for certain programs, like our instrumental music programs, really the in-person learning model, where we had, you know, all of our students or the predominant amount of our students in the building at the same time was the biggest hurdle because of how we had to cohort our students and how we had to schedule them throughout the day to keep within the guidelines of physical distancing in the classroom. So tonight, hopefully, I've had a number of conversations with people in the community, teachers, students, my own daughter, who is at my middle school and is in both the chorus and the orchestra, to explain why it is that we couldn't provide those, those programmings this year. So basically, what it comes down to is the constraints that were put on to offer as much as we could in terms of our academic programming and adhere to the health and safety guidelines for physical distancing, and then cohorting our students and staff, so there was minimal contact among those groups. So basically, with all of those constraints, we additionally had to obviously stick to the teacher contract, which requires them to have five teaching periods in our seven-period day, which means they have two periods that are non-classroom instructional periods. And sort of through this presentation, we hope that we can take you through a little bit of what that looks like from both the student lens and the teacher lens to show why scheduling and scheduling things like performing groups and music became such a challenge for us when we tried to meet everything else we were trying to from an academic standpoint. So this is really to highlight some of the major constraints that are different this year than in years past and why our current schedule, our current master schedule for the building is unlike any other schedule we've created before. So with that, I'll kind of have Jason take over and talk a little bit about what that looks like from a student lens and a teacher lens.
If we can go to the next slide, please, thank you. So Jason Goldstein, principal of Eastern Middle School. And so what I have here on this slide, as Tom was mentioning, with the parameters of cohorting and the guidelines of cohorting approximately 100 students or less, this is, for example, a sample cohort, if you look here, which is labeled at the red cohort with 95 students in it. And if you look horizontally from where it shows red cohort, you have group one, two, three, four, and five. To try to evenly divide the students from 100, obviously, if you do that, do the math, it's approximately 20 students. So the number in parentheses right now is how many students are in each class grouping. The numbers above it in the gray are the adjusted numbers of class grouping with the students removed that are in remote status. But more importantly, the number in bold next to each grouping is the number within that class grouping because if students return from remote back into their class in person, we obviously need to make sure they stay with that teacher, with that class, et cetera. So for example, if you look at group one, what you have here is a combination where students, and let me back up a little bit, the, the level of sort of filters that we used in terms of order or priority or hierarchy in terms of trying to group and get scheduling was one, students' math placement. Obviously, there are three discrete, you know, math classes in each grade level, and that was the first filter. So if you first put in the parameter, you have three variations of math classes. The second layer of that was their, their ELA level, their English Language Arts level. So for example, are they taking ALP English or are they not? Then the third layer of that was their world language placement. And within that world language, it wasn't, you know, they take world language or not, it is also which world language to try and get them into the Spanish or the French class. So for example, in group one, this is a group of students that were in Algebra VII, also taking ALP ELA, and also taking French. So mathematically, if we look at three levels of math, then we look at two variations of ELA, you already had six permutations. Then you add in Spanish or French, now you're looking at 12 different permutations, just looking at their math, ELA, and then their world language, just, you know, in terms of mathematical groupings, in terms of variations. Then you add into that, giving them an elective, making sure they have science, making sure that they have their social studies. So you can see here, there are five different groupings with combinations. We also layer into that, for example, in group four, these are students that happen to have obviously a math and ELA combination, as well as a world language, or the need for academic lab or special education services and support, as well as those students who might need paraprofessional support in their, in their mainstream classes as well. So there are a lot of different variations that cause sort of mathematically, a lot of different permutations of student schedule combinations. So when looking at, for example, the elective scenario, we have, depending on the building, for example, at Eastern, we have three cohorts per grade level. Just to share the number of students, I think Western and Central have two cohorts per grade level, but the same challenge arises where if you are going to add electives in, we are all opting for a rotational model so that you can have a elective teacher assigned to a cohort to minimize cross-cohorting of students and teachers. So you really have a math teacher, two ELA teachers, a social studies teacher, a world language teacher, an elective teacher, one sort of set of teachers that work with that cohort for pretty much their day. And the elective teachers will spend either a quarter or a trimester with a cohort before switching to a different cohort to again minimize cross-cohort interaction of not only human people, but also oftentimes the spaces that they're using, so what room we're using. Now, when you look at these, these variations and iterations, you also will notice that the class sizes are on average smaller, which was of course, one of the mandates, cohorting and keeping the class sizes, so we could have additional social distancing or additional number of feet between students. And, and what that creates also is needing to use more spaces or have more classroom spaces. So we'll talk a little bit later, Gordon will show you some, and talk about some of the spaces that we've converted. But with that also means that any classroom that historically would have been empty or not used during someone's, let's say, non-instructional period, is used by somebody else. And so from the teacher lens, we tried to make sure those teachers that are pushing in or rotating from available classroom to available classroom are rotating into classrooms within their same cohort of staff and students to again minimize the, the cross-cohorting. So this is just one cohort example of, you know, various combinations. And so one of the challenges, so for example, if we take the elective, and in this case, we replace the elective with music in a different cohort, if we're talking about, let's say, three vert, three levels of math, two levels of ELA, which is now six, you know, six variations, you add French and/or Spanish, which now gives you 12 variations. If you were then to try and schedule, let's say, strings, band, and orchestra, you're taking that 12 and moving it to 36 variations, really sort of a mathematical impossibility when looking at the same seven or eight staff members with that same number of people and limited number of space. If we can shift to the next slide for a second, or for a few minutes. So this is a sort of a lens, it might be a little bit blurry, or it might just be my eyes. If we look here, if we look at teacher, so for example, these are three cohorts within, you know, this particular case, seventh grade, and you have, if you look across the top, the red cohort, you have a math teacher, a science teacher, social studies, the two ELA teachers, the elective teacher, world language teacher, and in this particular case, two of the three cohorts, a special education teacher. So if we're looking at a teacher, for example, in the first column, the math teacher, they can contractually teach five sections or five classes in a day. So they really teach each of the five class groupings that I showed in the last slide, their math class. So this teacher will teach the various levels of math class, but they'll teach all five of those class groupings within that cohort. I can't have a sixth grouping within this particular cohort. One, I'm not sure, I, I could tell you, I know it in my building, and I can almost guarantee you in, in Central and Western, I wouldn't have, say, classrooms for them to, to go into, but I also couldn't have that math teacher teach a sixth class for a sixth grouping. So that, that is another piece that, that folds in here. So even with, if, for example, if I look at these three cohorts, I have an art teacher, a PE teacher, and a music teacher in this, in this grade level, I couldn't add an orchestra teacher, a band teacher, and a chorus teacher within the same combination. One, I don't have enough periods in the day to run it, I also don't necessarily have enough spaces for them, but also mathematically, I'm not, it would create so many other variations of combinations of math, ELA, and so forth, that, that it, you know, we had, we had to make some choices, I think. When, when all three of us, and you know, our buildings are a little different, but the, the challenges that we're facing are the same, and we're trying to approach it the same. And we've, we've obviously brainstormed, you know, many, many different variations and many different ideas to figure out how could we offer as much as, as, whether it be humanly possible or mathematically possible or facilities-wise or staffing, all of that plays in. It, it's been a real challenge, and we've had to make some compromises kind of across the board. I mean, you know, I'd be lying if I said this is a perfect scenario, but we're obviously trying to operate within the parameters we have with the, with the resources that we have. And, you know, obviously, we'll go through it, and if you have any questions, I can certainly refer back to, or any of us can. But in terms of space, I'll turn it over Gordon for a minute.
Sure, all right, guys, Gordon Byside, principal at Western Middle School. I'm the closer for this conversation, Mariano, we call myself this evening. So, um, if you, next slide, please, Mike. So this is just what, this is my, the current band room at Western Middle School, there's nothing like a band room right now. We have to repurpose the space, you see the piano in the back corner, but this is a classroom that has a couple of different sections in it at all times, they had to give this up to keep the class sizes smaller. And next slide, Mike. And then this is a media center, which has become multiple classroom spaces. Again, we have to repurpose our whole, not just our schedule, but our whole building, to keep the classes as small as possible. And let me just say this, I'm assuming we're here because you don't like our schedule, we don't like our schedule. This is not something we said, let's see, let's see how we can, you know, minimize certain content areas. The key piece for us was health and safety of kids. I believe strongly that kids need to be in our buildings. I know what happened when we went out in the spring, I lost so many of our kids. They need the connections with their friends, they need connections with their, with their teachers. And without such, they really took a hit. And I'm just speaking from my standpoint, I mean, the achievement gap we've been working for years to close, I'm afraid just blew up, and the longer we're out, the more it's going to blow up. So I'm in huge favor of coming into school. That being said, for that to happen, there are certain parameters, and health and safety was priority number one. And if, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. So we built everything around what's safest for our kids. So we're going to be in school, we need to cohort to keep them together. Because of that, certain content areas took a hit, but it's not just music. I got a home ec teacher who doesn't have a stove, I got a tech teacher who has no bandsaw, I got a gym teacher with no gym, because that's where I got my cafeteria. The art teacher is, is just in classrooms drawing because they can't use the clay. So that's kind of, it's kind of, this pandemic has set us all really, really hard. But the choices we made were not easy choices, and not choices we wanted to make, the choices we were forced to make in order to ensure that our kids were safe and in our buildings. And that's just kind of where we wound up by the end of the day, and happy to take any questions at this time, but that's kind of.
Can I just, sorry, can I just jump in for one sec? Mike, could you go back to the teacher slide, I think it was two slides back, I just want to clarify. So if you see the bottom cohort with the green teacher bar, really ultimately to try to simplify this, the music teacher in that, in that elective teacher with the five music periods, let's just say, for example, that was the chorus teacher last year. In my building, that teacher would have been teaching about 40 to 67 graders. Now, because I have to make my class sizes smaller every period across the day, they're actually teaching about 160 to 180 students. Because it's, I have to have a place, or we have to have a place for students to go in order to keep the class sizes small enough to meet the physical distancing guidelines. So really, in some, we gave you a lot of background on, on the complexities of scheduling, but when it comes to a music situation, our music teachers are still teaching general music, but the difference is, they're not teaching the performing groups, because the performing groups are about a third of a grade, and now they're teaching two-thirds to 75 or 80% of the grade. Because we have to have an adult with kids during those periods in order to meet the parameters we discussed before. So I just wanted to try to bring it back and simplify it to that situation, so thank you.
All right, everybody remains on mute, but I have this live here, so.
I guess I'll start with so, what are you doing to try to get band and chorus back for their students? What are alternatives, whether that's during the day, after the school day, or for others?
I think Dr. Jones alluded to that when she kicked us off. We have posted for an after-school music program for, for all three content areas, for orchestra, for chorus, and for strings, and for all three of our schools. So our hope is that the kids will continue after school. If guidelines change, we could have kids come into the building and stay after school. We can certainly rearrange furniture and have them stay after school, but at this point, that's not really an option in-house. We're not running late buses for anything, including intramurals at this time, or even extra help. So right now, the after-school is not an option, but if the state guidelines change and things ease up, I'd love to have them back in and do that, but right now, we're looking at an after-school opt-in program.
And, and speaking, you know, for, obviously, for all three of us, you know, I think all three of us are, you know, really hoping that that really takes off, and that's an opportunity for students to continue, you know, with the instrumentation, you know, and how, what that looks like, obviously, you know, we have a, sort of a blank slate in terms of using the, some of the things we learned from last spring, but obviously, taking a step further to allow the students to continue with the music, you know, do some ensemble practice. And the virtual setting also gives options for, depending on who and how and what building, it isn't necessarily relegated to one building. So we can provide that opportunity, even if, you know, a staff member is from one building and not another, it still provides an opportunity for students.
Okay. So, first of all, I don't think there is any criticism or judgment that nobody likes the several. People are all of whom are on that study, and I think it is safe to say that you guys have done a tremendous amount of work.
Can somebody, can somebody speak up, because I, we can't hear who that is.
It's me, Peter, Karen.
Karen?
Who else?
Oh, hi, okay, I'm sorry, I, it's, it's hard, really hard to hear remote here.
Okay, I'll try to speak up as much as I can from the microphone. So, yeah, I have some judges' general comments and then some questions.
Could you move, Gordon?
Keep going.
Okay, thanks. So I think I like hearing this board attention two meetings ago, that band, chorus, and orchestra are not going to be taught through A through eight, and are going to be modified for the high school in the, in the, to the hybrid model. However, they still don't sing or play together, as I understand, when they do that virtually. If the board had known that, I, I think there are several of us on the board that would have said, it's just simply unacceptable, unacceptable, and we need to go back to the drawing board. And going to boldly say that, that band, chorus, and orchestra has been in our curriculum for as long as probably has been a public school. Our program is highly regarded and is in fact envied by every district in Connecticut. And I'll also say the name probably of our New York neighbor in town. In fact, we value the program so much, we built a $43 million facility to showcase our amazing student enthusiasm. I'm not aware of any vote by this one change of curriculum to exclude these classrooms, which persists to the board's bylaw, which states that requires a more vote. Particularly, our board, our bylaws state, "The Board of Education shall have the authority to take all action necessary or advisable to meet its responsibilities under state statute and town charter, including but not limited to, and we'll make stop to number 11, to consider, revise, and adopt any changes in the curriculum." We did not vote on this, and I would have voted no. I find it incredibly concerning, and I struggle to find the equity in not having a chorus orchestra. And I'd just like to go through a few numbers, but I think I'll be involved in here, as we talk about our students. There are 954 students in grade three to five playing string. There are 498 students in the fourth and fifth grade that own the band. There are 400 string students in middle school. There are 410 in middle school that stay in band and advance. Hamilton Avenue is not included in this, and they have 200 string in the row, having to talk about chorus. There are 946 students in elementary chorus, and there are 304 students in sixth grade, 217 in seventh grade, and 200 in eighth grade. A sum amount, and before the 2019, 2020 school year, we have 4,125 kids participating in chorus, band, and orchestra in the middle school and elementary school alone, that's not too bad. That's a huge chunk of our population. Now, I'll give you that that number might be slightly smaller, because one kid, maybe more, it may have been so talented to cross over into multiple areas, but we don't have that number, because we don't have the number for those kids that participate in multiple corps. But it's safe to say that half our population essentially has been forgotten here. I received hundreds of emails and phone calls asking how we could do this, and I don't think we should, and I don't think we can. We are the only district in Fairfield County who, and currently, we are looked at as the upper echelon music program that is not running a band, music, or orchestra program this year. I struggle with this immensely. I find the cohort model that we are attempting to lay our weight upon is somewhat of a farce. We pull our kids out for out, we pull our kids out for study. High school sports are going forward, no doubt, and modify format, but at the moment, we are going forward. After-school programs are going forward, right, soccer associations are going, with ERCC running, dance school moving forward. And let me add one more key to the, to the fallacy that I think the cohort model is working under the administration's current guidance. If a child is quarantined because of the exposure, and that child has siblings in the school district, we've said, we've been told in our meetings, that those siblings can still go to school. It's one of the back home problems, but further exercise this point, how can we not say that what a band or orchestra program can advise students to go to school? Choreography is not helping the average, and we're looking for a better path. We talk about social learning and the health of our community, half our students have denied access, the motivation, the thing that defines them makes it exciting. And I'm struggling to fit within how we talk about mental health, right, so there's a nine-half of our operation to the choice of their environment. I know this is a joblifting thing out there, to do a virtual program after school. And I tend to be outside of my thinking. However, if I, if further drive being equality, because why, kids may not be allowed to participate after school, what about those kids that have to take care of their siblings? Or those who know who won't after school? Or lack, we participate in other activities, as well as some of our high school students that likely have a job. We are sidelining our parents' teachers that built this program. Many of, some of them cannot participate after school for their own family reasons. These teachers know our kids, they've worked with them for years, we're potentially animating a program that is taking generations to build. I read the agenda today, and I think it's worth reading, I read the one, particularly very, two paragraphs stand out, that says that the arts have a profound and positive effect on contributing to students' socioeconomic and socioeconomic needs. And provide strong guidance and considerations that should be taken. Renner's School Music Department have a program, and we ask for our teachers, they in fact have figured out a way to combine band, music, and orchestra within the guidelines, the guidelines to state and align. And furthermore, this administration has relied on and referred to, and also to the board on the line in town, that we're following the Connecticut guidelines, but we're not following the Connecticut guidelines. Connecticut guidelines say that a band, chorus, directing force program can feed into effect following particular, following that order guideline. These educators shouldn't have been consulted, our teachers should have been consulted. The programs that they created, they weren't, and the program was not created. And I think we need to go back to the drawing board and do it quickly. Now, I heard Tony, and I appreciate the three principals from middle school coming on, to point a reason. Tony, you just tried to justify, you just can't do that. I've spoken to many others, and I'm just, I'm struggling to find what to call it. I think those on this call need to hear what we can do and what plan we can put into an attempt to bring these classes back this year. I find this to be a huge injustice, and we need to do, we need a better explanation and a justification, and it's including, it's for the board vote on any change in curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. I think we're having significant difficulties with the audience hearings on what microphone you're using to broadcast through Zoom, but if members could speak directly to the online panel. All right, get that, Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Yeah, we are, it is difficult to hear, I think, for all the attendees and, which raises our new concern because based on how difficult it is to hear, I can only imagine how difficult it's going to be for all of our remote learners if the attendees are having trouble with people masked and mics. So I just, that's, that's another kink we're going to need to work out. I have the utmost respect for the middle school principals here. I think you're fantastic. I think you've done the impossible of creating a schedule based on these constraints that you were given and I, I'm, my hat's off to you. So that being said, I really think we missed the mark, Tony, when, when, with not, never exploring hybrid, because that would have given more options in smaller cohorts and I think that these principals would have had more to work with had we, had we even explored hybrid as an option. I also see, know that, you know, I, from what I did hear Ms. Kowalski say, the board, you know, I, the board is not consulted and this decision was made single-handedly and there are going to be, there are countless musicians and future musicians or families who, who rely on these, on, on band, music, chorus, and our, that decision was made without consultation. I agree that that was also done in error. And I, and my last question, I guess, is why are we not, we're listening to the principals, like I said, my hat's off to you three. Why are we not listening to the creative ideas? Why don't we, why do we not have the music department here sharing their creative ideas instead of hearing from the principals? Why this does not work? Why aren't we listening to possible solutions from the music department? That would make a lot more sense to me.
Thank you, Ms. Herschel.
Music instruction is an integral part of the school experience for so many students and supports our need to focus on educating a young child. Many studies show music instruction can help accelerate brain development, foster creativity, critical thinking and communication in children and are more important now than ever, as music and art instruction supports the social emotional wellbeing of our students and helps to foster a school community. We are to the strong emphasis on team building and self-reflection and are a wonderful way to reunite students' interest in learning and collaboration. They help to create a welcoming school environment where students can express themselves in a safe and positive way. Many of our students have dedicated years of practice to the study of music. As I've said many times, not all of our students find their success through academics. Some students find their passion through athletics or the arts. Our students often receive scholarships based on their musical artistic prowess. And districts across Connecticut and the nation are all finding ways to bring worse of instrumental music back. If we don't, we are putting our students at a distinct disadvantage. The Connecticut State Department of Education's indentment number seven states that during the COVID-19 pandemic, it's essential for Connecticut schools to maintain challenging and rigorous programs of study in the arts across all grade levels. And as detailed in Connecticut Art Standards, which states meaningful music learning equally includes the artistic process of creating, responding, performing and connecting. I understand that there are issues that you have before you've been trying to make this work within the middle school schedule. But there are countless guidance documents from arts organizations around the country and I am sure that some of the incredible and creative ideas from our own music teachers might help bridge the gap. Working together, that I'm sure we can find a safe way to bring back instrumental instruction and chorus. We need a week or two to get things into place, it's fine, but I do want a definitive date where we can expect a plan to return this type of instruction to our schools in some shape or form. To me, this is untenable. Losing a year's worth of course or instrumental instruction could be the thing that takes music away from a child. And through this all, with all of us locked in our mom's seat from quarantine, one of the things that brought people together so much was music. I beg of you to really sit down, sit down with some of our educators, our incredible music teachers, and work this out, find a way for this to happen for our students. As Gordon pointedly said, when we're talking about doing this as an average, a lot of people who aren't even offering late buses, which means that for some of our most vulnerable students, after-school music programs are simply not going to be an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schell.
I have a question and then I want some feedback and then I hope we can continue with dialogue and figure out a path forward here. I really appreciate you guys sharing that information. My question for the three of you, and I, I don't know which one of you wants to answer it, but I really like to understand when, who, who and when you guys were told that it was okay to take our music curriculum and decide to, you, you use words like suspend and I'm trying to understand how you guys ever got that guidance and when did you get that guidance?
I'll take this one. I think we, as we started to build the schedule, once we realized the constraints we were under, this was, I would say, early in July, we were starting to put this thing together. It became very clear to us that we were going to have a lot of struggles in offering everything we previously offered. Those downtown were aware of the struggles we were having. This was not a unilateral decision by the three of us by any means. This is just kind of where we ended up, based upon the constraints we were under to build the schedule. I don't know if that answers your question, Peter, or not.
No, it does, Gordon. And as always, you're, you know, you guys, I can always count on the three of you to be very straight and answer direct questions with direct answers, which I appreciate. It makes it, it makes it a lot easier. Look, here's, here's the problem, I, I think, here's the problem as I see it. Whoever gave you that guidance that that would be okay was completely disconnected from the board and our policy. Okay, so I don't, I hear you guys talk about music, it's a little bit concerning. And, and you know, this is probably our fault, or, you know, we communicate exclusively to you guys through the superintendent. We're not allowed to talk to anybody else, right? We're not allowed to talk to your, your direct bosses. We're only allowed to talk to, to our superintendent and that's the way it's been. It's, you know, that's the way superintendents want it and I understand why they want it that way. But as a result, I think if we're not careful, particularly when we have superintendent turnover, something gets lost in the sauce. All right. So here's the feedback that I would give you where I could, and I appreciate everything you guys have done, as, as Ms. Olson has said, none of this is easy. Planning is hard. You know, you've listened to me, I think, I think this planning is incredibly complex. I saw that very early. Our planning started very late. We didn't start till July. It was a Herculean task in a short period of time. It required somebody to kind of put stakes in the ground and say, I need all of your creativity and flexibility in building schedules, doing X, Y, Z, but somebody needed to lay down, here's a set of basic things, whatever you do, you must do. And somehow, somebody put in somebody's head that it was okay to just, you used the word, we can't deliver the program now. Let me tell you what you're really saying. You're saying, I've decided I'm just not going to deliver certain major parts of, of curriculum of Greenwich Public Schools. Okay, that's really what that means. And I know that may not sound such a big deal to you guys. It's actually a super big deal if somebody said, hey, when we reopen schools, there's major parts of a curriculum, which is approved by the board, required by the state, that we approve it, that somebody could just drop and we just happened to find that out, by the way. Here, here's the thing, I think you guys may not completely understand and I think we need to break this down. You know, you guys have in each one of your schools, particularly at Eastern, a major element of the music program. The music program we have in Greenwich Public Schools is one of the finest K-12 music education programs in the United States. It's truly a world-class program that's been built over decades of commitment by the community, successive boards of education, parents, and we're blessed with the best music educators anywhere in the country. You know, we're spinning out alumni from this integrated program and some of the most important accomplished people in global music community today. I mean, you guys are all familiar with Rob Mathis, right? He came through this program. I mean, he's an Emmy award-winning musician who composed, arranged and produced for Sting, Carly Simon, Celine Dion, Rod Stewart, Pavarotti, Tony Bennett, Natalie Cole. You know, we're not just running some general music program here. You know, some of you maybe have Scooter Braun. I mean, he's managing Justin Bieber, Ariana Grande, some of the most important musicians in the country. And it's not just pop music. I mean, I can think of Lori Rogers, who's the head of music at Opera Saratoga and is the assistant conductor of Dallas, of the Dallas Opera. You know, th- these are students that have come through this program and it only happened because there was a fully integrated K-12 program. You know, and you guys know what this turns out. If you're not familiar, when you get to the high school as an example, you know, our program graduates, music students are getting into the best undergraduate music schools and conservatories in the world. You know, our students are routinely admitted to Juilliard, Manhattan, Berkeley, Johns Hopkins, Eastman, Rochester, Oberlin, NYU, Carnegie Mellon. You know, what actually happens, what you guys do in the middle school is a linchpin of feeding that whole program. I mean, there are 28 high schools in Fairfield County. There's a thing called the Western Regional Music Festival, which is an audition-only musical event. In chorus alone, Greenwich musicians compromise one-third of all students in the Western Regional Choir. I'm not even talking about band, I'm not even talking about the orchestra. I'll give you another example. This year alone, there are six recent graduates singing in the advanced choirs at Princeton University. Six from one high school. It's, I mean, it's unheard of. And, you know, this just didn't happen, this bill, this program got built over decades. You know, we hired and retained the best music educators available. I know particularly the ones at Eastern, I'm sorry, I don't know as well the other ones, but take Matt Tracy in, in music and, you know, Waschgo went on to another job, but these are like the finest people. Patrick Taylor and all the new staff at the high school. What actually happens in the elementary schools? You know, this, this is part of a comprehensive program with a, with a fully integrated curriculum. You know, and to support this, we built at a cost of $46 million, $46 million, one arguably the finest, if not the finest, high school musical instruction space in the country. So when we take out a major pillar of a fully integrated curriculum, which you guys in the middle schools are dead on center in that whole program, you essentially, leaving out the, you know, you guys are obligated to teach the curriculum, we're essentially doing real damage to this program. Now, I wish somebody, and I'm so disappointed this is coming up now, I feel so badly for you guys that nobody said at that point, that's not an option. You have to figure out how to do this. And if you had the runway to be able to do that, I'm sure with the three of you, the music staff, you know, you guys would have come up with solutions. So this idea that it's like an after-school extra activity, it, I can't tell you how troubling it is to hear that that's what the administrators think about this thing. And I feel badly as a board, as a board member, I'll say that. Lately, on the board, and I've been doing it a lot lately, not lately, but I did it in prior years, you know, you guys would come in and present to the board and to just, you know, be the get-along bonhomie. When things were said, I didn't stand up and say, wait a second, that's not correct. I already have that reputation on the board. But I really wished I had been certain that you guys understood that this is curriculum, it's approved, it's only, you can only change it by coming to the board. The superintendent does not have the authority to change the curriculum. And this stuff is part of curriculum. So just switching it to generalized music was not, somebody should have told you, you can't do that. Now, we are where we are right now. I think what has to happen, and this is my suggestion to the other board members, we, okay, the middle school is a problem and that problem has to get reworked. And we need to give the middle school principals with the music staff, particularly from Havemeyer and I would say what the middle schools are feeding at the high school, that group needs to get together and figure out, they need to fly over this target again. And they need to figure out what can be done, what can't be done and what they need to ask for. For example, if we need tents to be put up to create temporary classroom space, I want to hear about that as a board member. I was shocked to hear right here and now, guys, that you took over that space. I understand why you did it, but nobody ever told me you were doing that. And that's a real problem. I mean, that's a real logistical problem. The cohorting model, candidly, I don't have as much faith in the cohorting model because a lot of you are moving everybody around for lunch. So let's not get too wholly about the cohorting model, because we're not doing the cohorting model purely in the middle schools. The other thing that's got to happen, and this, I guess, I want to address to Dr. Jones, is Dr. Jones, I understand the problem that you presented at the middle school. That doesn't mean we should be shutting off these programs, the programs, or anybody has the permission to shut off these curricular programs at the elementary schools and at the high schools. Because in those places, well, middle, elementary schools are specific problems because we have lots of cafeteriums and some other problems. At the high school, with the facility we built to the tune of $46 million, I think it's quite clear that the music staff there can figure out how to run those programs consistent with the guidelines published by the Connecticut State Department of Education. And to the best of my knowledge, all the other high schools in Connecticut that are our peers, particularly in Fairfield County, they're going ahead with their programs, following the social distancing and other health and safety measures recommended by the Connecticut State Department of Education. I would need someone to really explain to me why we couldn't do that at the high school. I got the problem at the middle school right now, I think we have to fix that. At the high school, before I would ever approve changing the curriculum, which includes band, orchestra and chorus, it is not, say, generally music, it's very specific. And I would not be supportive of changing that curriculum. I think we need to teach that curriculum intact when schools open, even, and I expect fully, it would be very bumpy and very difficult at the beginning. I think all parents and students and the public should understand that. But the idea of canceling it and just flipping it to generalized music instruction, which by the way, everybody means, for those of you musicians who aren't musicians, don't know what that means, that means, let me teach you how to read sheet music. And that's what generalized music theory is. I just don't think that is acceptable. So I'd rather you guys go back, put your brilliant heads together. I have great confidence in you guys as a middle school. I have tremendous confidence in that we have the best educators in music in the country. I'm really confident we put those I'm really confident we put those smart brains in a room and we unleash them, they'll come up with some really innovative and creative solutions. And I'd like to see them, if they, if there's anything required from the board for them to do this, I'd like to see that very, very quickly so we can give you all the support you need.
I can't, oops, sorry. Sure, I can. I mean, I think you all make really great points, but the reality is we're in the middle of a pandemic and there are many things that have changed because of the pandemic. It's also athletics. Almost every aspect of our schools, we're not using lockers. We, I mean, it's touching everything. And I think, you know, there are a few parameters where we're trying to do the very best that we can. And if you remember at the beginning of the summer, and when we started our planning, we were ordered for a full return. So we started working on schedule where we couldn't even think about hybrid anywhere, even for the high school. And, you know, there are a lot of concerns with music. And the music staff actually at Havemeyer did bring us some planning. And that having kids in hallways with masks with slits on them, we don't have the, those spaces any longer where you can actually socially distance right now in the school. Now, if what the board is asking for this team to go back and redo their entire master schedule, that, that's going to be, that would be, it will take a very, very long time. It's definitely not going to be done by next week and probably, you know, not maybe, I don't know, January. But what it would do for us to actually put that back on the schedule, we are making the decision as a community that music is going to drive how we re-enter and we will be on a hybrid like high school. And I think it goes back to the point that we really believe that a full return was very important socially, emotionally for families. We don't know how long we're going to be able to return this year. You know, we listen to all of the science and we simply don't know what we don't know. And it's, it is, we heard from many, many parents that having our sixth and seventh graders home three days a week is not what they want to see from the school district. So we've taken input from the community. We've, we've really tried to implement the very best way that we can. When you talk about the high school facility, we're using the facility every single day. Our high school students are following their normal schedule. So at any time, if we feel like we are in a safer environment, they'll be able to start playing live. The high school schedule's intact on Monday and Tuesday when they're in person. That's when they're going to do their theory. They're doing the live playing when they're at home on distance learning Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or obviously if you're a Thursday, Friday kid, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. All of that curriculum is in place. But right now, and I have spoken to the headmaster about this, and we are both in agreement, our Shunsan principal, that we are not comfortable yet, we haven't even got our kids back in school. We have a lot of very nervous staff. We're trying to take baby steps every day to get everybody back and be successful. And along with that, I can tell you that when I get, when I get emails from, for instance, music staff, one paragraph is about, they're disappointed, obviously, that they don't have music. And then the next paragraph is about air quality and they don't think air quality is good enough. And so we're addressing all of those issues, but to say that you're, as your school superintendent, that I'm comfortable with students having slits in their mask and blowing on an instrument, number one, taking one mask off and putting on another, I'm not. And we can't have something like that on the schedule and count on outside. We also have Western and Eastern who are already buildings that stay full. And when you compare us to other districts, you're right, a lot of them are going hybrid and parents are having to manage their children and figure it out. But we heard loud and clear that our parents wanted us to return. And so that's what this school's schedule has done. You know, I'll leave it at that. We looked at tents. We actually spent quite a bit of time looking at tents. That was not advisable. We actually met with the tent company. You know, Dan, Dan Watson did that for us, was somebody that runs and sets those tents. We also were in conversations with superintendents all through Fairfield County. There are very few that went with tents, especially in the middle of hurricane season. That's how you end up with a pole going through somebody's window, somebody being hurt because the tents are there. And if you go with the tents, you have to rent them for the full year. They have to have, certainly you have to go through engineering, we have to go through planning and zoning. And I don't think that any of us that have done any sort of construction process in Greenwich thinks that that's going to be needing to move really swiftly either. But it was not advised from a safety reason for tents. So we did look at that. We do believe the cohorting model is better than having children all over the building every day. That's what the scientists tell us. That's why we've gone in this direction and we are trying to implement everything that we believe to keep our children and staff safe. So, I mean, that's where we are. We want to offer it after school. We want kids to be able to play their instruments. If we're able to get to the point that we can have live after school, we'll run like classes for kids. We don't mind doing that. But we have to get to the point, we're not even in our schools yet. And what we really need is for our Board of Education to support these three principals who have worked the entire summer so hard. And we're going to do everything we can to make this a great entry for our children. And it's, we're, we're doing, we're making hard decisions based on what we believe is right to keep children and staff safe.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I guess thank you for starting with the macro. I think we need to have some perspective. We are starting in a place where we're in a global pandemic. Basically, we're mandated to wear masks when we're around other people. We're mandated to keep distance. Being in band, being in chorus, those are times when we're expelling. If anybody's seen Hamilton, the video on Disney, just ask King George, I'll tell you. If you haven't, go ahead and watch it. But the fact of the matter is, we've got to start with health and safety, as the principals noted. You know, we are not back to school. We have to get back to school. We will know a lot more in two weeks, in three weeks. I do not believe this should be the end of the conversation. I think it's a starting point. I would like to see it that because to go to the micro, I've got a band kid. Band for a lot of students is their team sport. And, you know, whether it's Honor Fire, whether it's band, whether it's some of the festivals that they go on, whether it's their field trips to play in some of those festivals, these are, these are important to our students. I don't know whose side of that, but at the same time, some of our teachers were amazingly creative in the spring. I know some of our students who are taking music lessons through tuning, tuning the music through Greenwich Alliance. I know Project Prodigy, his, to resume the music teachers, gotten students private online lessons with other students throughout the country. That's actually worked really well for a lot of students. There are other ways to do this. I would love it to be back in the school day, whether it's during a lot of times, it's social, emotional, even if it's just a small group of kids, even if they're not playing to be with the teacher. So please do be creative, but I am not ready to upend the, the entire out part until we know more. We've got to get back to school. That is the starting phase. I don't, I didn't hear any of the principals say, I've heard Dr. Jones say, we're giving up on, on doing this for our students. And I hope I don't have her hear that. But I really do believe, you know, you guys have done the human work to get the schedules to work as they are with all the variability, you know, using the buildings as best you can. We know that some of the limitations. So I would say keep pressing forward. I want to hear more about it. I want this to be the outcome. So that'll turn everyone's coughing.
Sorry, I was looking for my hit on the zoom and I'm so conditioned now to hit on that and now being back in person. So first of all, during the time in which you've been, please don't miss true any of my comments. I think you guys have done a lot of work and spent a lot, probably painstaking hours and evenings, weeks and months, putting the schedule together. I get all of that. And my, and my, and my position on that is really focused on trying to find ways to help the 4,000 plus kids in the middle school and elementary schools that are going to be starting from music. And I just, one question pops into my mind is, do we decide music versus what PE, art and home ec? And I'm not picking, I'm not picking on the PE teachers, the art teachers and the home ec teachers, but there are other classes there as well that I'm wondering why we didn't choose them versus the others. Also, you know, I, there, there are people out there on the new science with respect to playing music and singing. And first of all, and orchestra in and of itself, by the way, I'm not sure the same talking thing or singing while we're playing orchestra music. So that one is beside the point as well as why we should try and find ways for that one out. But there is new science out there and it relates to how one can grow up doing chorus and in band. And I'm sure there are chorus kids that wouldn't find having chorus, even if they had the thing with masks on, which is the same thing. Going to the, to the point though of, you know, what Peter, what Mr. Bernstein said, I don't hear that we're giving up on students. I'm actually going to ask that question. Are we giving up on students? Because I got an email from the, the middle school principals that said, we're not going to have band, chorus or musical orchestra this year, which means have we stopped looking at this? That's question number one. And two, how is this, you know, we're hearing from the middle school principals, but what about the elementary school principals in being able to pull out for cohorts, for orchestra band and chorus there? They don't pull out, there are ways to do smaller numbers and smaller classes. And I know that for orchestra in elementary school, they bring them out in strings in third grades for violin to come out and they're, they're choraling and they play. You're keeping smaller numbers. So I'm wondering why that doesn't work. And also my question about why weren't other subjects chosen to be brought from the, the schedule? And two, are we giving up on students based upon the email traffic I've seen and the emails from schools saying there is no band chorus for this year at all in those?
Did you want us to respond to that or?
Guys, hang on one second. Middle school principals, hang on one second. We've got to turn the audio up. I think, Jason, we missed what you said. So if you want to repeat.
I was asking the same thing as Tom was. Is this something you want us to respond and then, you know, any, any one of us can address it? So we'll talk about it if you want.
Do you want to, you want to respond? You can certainly.
Yeah, so Jason, you can pick up. This is Tom Healy again. So just Karen, to your point about why music and not an other elective area.
Yeah.
It wasn't an either or. Every, we're, we're running those other electives as well. So actually, if I didn't articulate this a little as clearly earlier, what, what actually happened is we actually have more students taking what is general music because we needed our music teachers to teach more kids in order to get the physical distancing in the classrooms each period. So the way that our master schedule runs, our staffing ratio, we need to have, let's say, for example, you have 100 students in a, in a cohort, we need to be running a minimum of five sections in a given day in order to get that down to say 20. But when we add in our levels of the other classes, as Jason was explaining, those numbers go off. Some classes are 16, some might be 24. So we need to pull from other areas. So our music teachers who used to teach about 60 students in a grade level are now teaching about, as I said before, about 140, 160 students throughout the day, the general music. So their, their schedule is now full instead of multiple sections of smaller classes of say, sixth grade band where they may have 10 kids, you know, 12 kids and 15 kids, they now have around 20 of sixth grade every, all five periods. It's simply because we have the staffing, we need the staffing in order to pull the students out of other areas to have physically distanced classrooms to meet the guidelines that we were given. So we, we built a master schedule around those parameters. Now, if we want to build music back in, we're pulling kids out of those music classes and they'd have to go into a class somewhere. We don't have opens like Greenwich High School, so they have to be filtered back into a classroom somewhere because we're taking about 80 kids out of a class and we need to filter them back into the four other classes being offered that period. We can't do that with the guidelines that we have. So it requires other driving forces in our master schedule. So it would be a complete master schedule rebuild with music instruction in and would require the staffing to pull those other kids out and put them somewhere physically in the building.
So one question on that, Tom. So my understanding is now we've got a, a job posting out and if there are applicants in there for the music program, and here, I'm thinking outside the box, right? If we've got job applicants for the music program to come in and teach, if we have people that we can hire because we were going to do it after school, can we bring them to teach during the day in order to add that, that to your staff, to deal with your staffing problem?
Though, so the response to that is obviously more staffing would be helpful, right? Always. But the idea that the two parameters there are, for example, if I bring in a chorus teacher, right? So I have my, or I bring in a general music teacher, let's say, and I take my chorus teacher who's now teaching general music and I make her my chorus teacher. I have to give her a schedule of five periods in the day, which go along with our schedule, that she would just teach chorus. As of right now, that means if I'm telling her she's teaching period one chorus to sixth graders, any kid who takes chorus in sixth grade has to be pulled from that period one class. For a child, it could be PE. For another child, it could be math, right? And if I'm trying to cohort those kids as well, then I'm also saying I can only teach chorus to the kids on team or cohort six one. So it's just these 100 kids are going to meet this one period. So the issue is twofold. One is when we set a schedule throughout the day, even if it's a pullout model, we're pulling kids out of whatever class they have at that time. It's not like elementary school when they all have language arts or they all have math at a given time, based on what math level you're in or advanced, you know, language arts or whatever else, it's all over the school day. So that's one constraint. Now, again, it's a choice, right? This is all about choices. So that's one. And then the other one is the, just the physical space. So whether or not we actually have the physical space to bring kids in and spread them out to the guidelines and have them sing or blow into an instrument or whatever, that's the other challenge. So I'm not saying it's an impossibility. I'm saying those are the constraints that we have when we don't have that course built in and driving our master schedule like it does. Because actually, in our traditional master schedule, music as a singleton course, which it tends to be for kids in a grade level, ends up driving their schedule in many cases. So we just came at it from that other end.
And so historically also, when you, when you pull the students out for band or orchestra music, you pull it out of something that doesn't pull them out of an academic, like an advisor-based class. So you're pulling students from the entire grade, if you're doing it by grade level into band or orchestra or chorus, which then would be pulling students from, in, in Eastern's case, all three cohorts or in, in, in Western or Central, out of both the two cohorts, which again defeats the whole cohorting model in keeping students co-horted and socially distant in that regard. And I think another part of the question, I think you had asked, also asked when asking like why this versus that, some of the elective decisions were made by, for example, health, it's a state requirement, right? So I have to offer health and PE as part of my elective rotation, but those are state requirements that students have to have. So if that takes up the elective block or one of the three electives that a particular grade level has, obviously that narrows down how many other electives. I only have two other electives that grade level can get in that year. So if this, and if they have to have health and PE, so some of those decisions were made by one of the state requirements as well as, you know, what I can offer in the schedule. And if they have five academic classes and they have the one elective block, in that particular case, you know, there isn't the room for, you know, the multiple electives or I don't have the staff to offer multiple electives within a cohort. So, you know, you would need, in theory, a band, an orchestra and a chorus teacher at, for each grade level to rotate through in a cohort. But then you'd also have to determine or decide, getting them into band, orchestra or chorus as one of those three variations, where does that fall in the order of what comes first? So do we put them into orchestra, band and chorus first, then try to get them into their math level class second, then their E level third? Like where do you put it? And those are obviously difficult decisions to make. So that was part of, part of the challenge as well. I don't know if that makes any sense.
And, and I just wanted to follow up with the fact that, as a reminder, we are three extraordinarily supportive principals of the arts and of music. Gordon's son and, you know, daughter played all the way up through high school in orchestra and band. As I mentioned before, my daughter sang in the chorus and made Western Regionals as a sixth grader and did not have the opportunity last year or this year and was in the orchestra as well. So this is hard on many ends and unfortunately, it's, it's a, it's a tough situation to be in. But, you know, whatever we're trying to do to give everything we can to the kids, certain things had to give in this particular case. And so creative solutions, we're always open to creative solutions and continuing to work on the problem. So, you know, I think we appreciate the conversation, but we're just, I didn't want it to come off as if we're defending our schedule so much as explaining what it was.
No, no, Tom, Tom, I totally get it. All right. I, I, I know you have kids in, in the music system as, as well, and I truly appreciate that. And, and I, and I understand what you're doing. And I, like I said, I, I know that you guys, I think I've used this phrase a number of times in different circumstances. You know, sometimes this work that we've all You know, sometimes this work that we've all been doing during this period is like, feels like you're treading water with your hands tied behind your back and bricks on your feet, right? We're just doing the best that we can to keep our nose above ground, water. Comes, comes through. So, and I under, and I appreciate the challenges. And Tom, you know me well, I don't give up and I'm not giving up on this, sorry. So my question then becomes, well, I want, I want the other question answered too, which is what is the long-term issues? What is the long-term decision being made? Because I know an email went out saying, we're not doing this for, we're not doing band, chorus and orchestra this year. So that's, still need that question answered and I know you guys are getting it and I interrupted you. But the second issue is, what do you need? What would make a difference, right? If you could, if you could put this back under the constraints that you're under, what additional support would you need to make it happen? Because that's one thing we haven't heard, right? And maybe we just need to have that, move to that conversation. What else is there?
I'll jump on this one just real quick. I think, again, if we're, if we're going to cohort, if that is what, if that is the standard which we're kind of looking through, we're going to need three, again, it just topped my head, three teachers per building to manage general music so that our current teachers can go back to their old content areas. We wouldn't change the schedule, they would do a pullout model. And then, which, we still offer the stuff with the pullout model. We'd have to find rooms which currently have been repurposed for other functions. Again, I like to think we can make that happen. That's three classrooms I currently don't have. I have 48 rooms in my building, I have six cohorts, each cohort is eight rooms, it's the way it kind of worked through. I like to think we can play with that a little bit, but it definitely require nine teachers. I mean, you know, for it, for us to run it as we like to run it and still cohort, it's a lot more staffing.
No, I appreciate it. No, that's helpful. Like I, I want the outside of the box thinking. You guys have presented challenges. Obviously, health and safety is a huge issue. But again, I'm, you know, my, it's coming through, right? Then I'm frustrated that we dropped these three program, these classes and part of the curriculum, which I think is paramount to the Greenwich School, public school system. So I'm trying to find ways in which we get it back. And that's what I want to do.
Again, that's it. I think Tom said it well, none of us wanted to make these decisions, but if health and safety is our priority, and I believe we all agree that it is, and we were given the constraints we were kind of given to build the schedule, I like to think we can be more creative. It was like the three of us just threw this together in a weekend and said, okay, I think we're good. We spent months on this to build what we have. So unless the constraints change, or there's a different emphasis going forward, or a lot more staffing, like I just mentioned, I don't have a say, I can't say there'll be music next week or next month because the constraints haven't changed. And, and I don't know what else I could come up with that's going to make it look different.
And even with more staffing, you know, obviously without, you know, we, we might have to revisit the, the extent to which we're okay with cross-cohorting. And again, which, again, if we're talking health and safety and we're following the cohorting and trying to be really strictly adhering as best we can to that, you know, we'd have to look to see to what extent even adding the more staffing, would that still require cross-cohorting? And again, without looking at each individual student's schedule, you know, it would be hard to ascertain, could you get them all on the same cohort and rotate through with, with still keeping the class size as small? Not sure.
Okay. So this is a question for Tony then. Where did we come up with the cohorting model that it has to be 100 students?
I actually, that is. Oh, sorry. I'm still getting feedback. So that actually came from the state level guidance to have the cohort of 100, of 100. And so we've tried to stick to that. We also wanted to have the smaller class sizes so that we could get the distancing between three to six feet, between all of our desks within the classrooms. So all of that, and that's all state level guidance for us. You know, conference calls every week with Connecticut State Department of Education, the governor's office has certain things they put out for us, the Connecticut Department of Health, the Greenwich Public Health Department, Head of Nursing, I mean, it's, we get inputs from all of these different, these different groups who actually weigh in and help guide this process. And, and part of it, and I do just want to say, at the high school again, they are orchestra is actually playing because they have a large beautiful room. We could get 10 to 12 feet, which is what was recommended. They are actually participating. It's only the band and the chorus that we're waiting until we feel safer because they have a different type of mask and we're just, we're not there yet with safety. The high school. Yeah, the high school has a normal schedule, they're using their space. If we get back to school and everybody feels like we're in a good spot for safety and they change some of the guidance. But we actually have, we have a lot of staff who would like for us to be using CDC guidance and not Connecticut guidance. And we're actually using the Pediatric Association who advised the Connecticut Department of Health. If we went back to CDC, we couldn't even do what we're doing now at all. And so really, if we were to try to open the schedule back up, what it means for us is hybrid. I mean, that is the simple answer. If we were going to do it, we need our kids home three days a week because it's the space that they've had to cap.
Okay. All right. Ms. Downey.
Boy, I've had my hand up for a while. This is a long, I'm just going to, I just wanted to thank the middle school principals. Boy, my head's kind of spinning and I'm a numbers person and a graph person, but boy, your visual was extremely helpful to understand the complicated task and that it was not as simple. I just want to be sure I understand if the constraints, as Gordon said, remain the same? What you were, because it was, it was a little muffled, some of the audio, what, if the constraints don't change, what you were proposing for band, band, chorus, orchestra, just because then I'll have a follow-up to that, just to be sure I understand it properly.
I think if I'm being totally honest, which is always a flaw of mine, I don't know what can change. We could offer it after school and hopefully we can get the kids on campus and after school. But if the constraints don't change and there's no change in personnel or staffing at all, what we've offered right now is what we're going to offer in the short term and long term.
Meaning zero.
Meaning after school at best.
After school at best. Okay. So I am concerned that by taking it out of our curriculum, not just, you know, kind of why it's in curriculum, we're derailing our program on a going forward basis. You know, you lose a year of instrumental music instruction for the eighth graders. They go to the high school next year. You know, we're, we're digging a hole for our kids. And I understand the global and the macro that we're in a global pandemic, but I agree with Karen that saying, like, let's put our heads together and see if you guys say, if I, if you got your nine teachers and you could make it happen, then maybe we as a board have to look into how we can make that happen with the BET. So we, I think create, let's look forward and seeing the ways we can try to resolve the issue in a, and it's never going to be perfect, as you guys said. Nobody's, it's not that we're going to be happy with it, but there are better, I think, I feel that if putting heads together, possibly getting more resources towards the, towards the issue, that we may be able to make it better. It may not, it's not necessarily going to be what it is normally, but better than where people feel it is right now. Along those lines, one question I have is I know normally in a middle school, right? When a kid is picking their electives, some kids don't pick art and some kids don't pick music. Isn't that correct?
It is correct. Elective can sometimes be a misnomer. Sometimes it's what fits in your schedule, being honest. But yeah, we do give them, our goal is to get them experience for each of those areas by the time they leave middle school.
Right. But I'm, I'm just thinking of like a kid who, you know, who doesn't take art for three years. And maybe this is part of the creative problem solving that, you know, if we have to get a cohort of band or, you know, or instrumental music or chorus in lieu of art as your, you know, one-third of the year. I mean, this is where I'm kind of going with, you know, the kids, I know they have to have PE from a state requirement, but maybe if they had a general music and the PE and instead of art, there was an instrumental as their third component, if we could get the staffing. I mean, these are just the kinds of, of things I'm thinking about. And I just want to ask Tony, where we are in terms of the elementary schools, because I understand where we're doing at the high school and now I clearly understand what we're doing at the middle schools, what are we doing at the elementary school level? I know, like, are we doing no lessons whatsoever? Are we doing, because those tend to be, I mean, I know the big chorus and band are bigger, but there are, the instrumental lessons at the elementary school are always very small group oriented. So what are we doing about those, just so we have full clarity of the picture going forward?
So we are trying at the middle, at the elementary, it's actually, it's general music. Just, it looks very similar in how it looks at the middle school because the teacher is, must travel and move from room to room instead of the kids moving down the hallway. In elementary, the cohorts are even smaller where we try to have those grade level cohorts of children. Obviously, it's much more difficult in a building for social distancing and cohorting with little people. So the music teacher moves around and again, it's the same, it's really the same issues in elementary, even with space. We're using art rooms and music rooms and all of our spaces in really unique ways, trying to make sure that we can social distance and cohort. So whether or not we will offer after school, I would hope that as we go, if, as we go through the year, we can do a lot like we did last spring where the elementary had some wonderful programming and actually the education foundation, the alliance, Greenwich Alliance, really helped do a lot of even individual lessons with, for instance, HAMAB where they have such a strong magnet program. But that's where we are right now. It is general music for elementary.
No, and I know that that's normally is. I'm just saying, so like you have a band teacher or an orchestra teacher at the elementary level, what are they teaching? What are they doing now? Like I'm just trying to understand because normally they would come in, they're two days, let's use the band at Riverside, he'd come in two days a week and he'd do lessons. There was never like a big class instruction anyway. So what is that teacher doing now?
Yeah. I might ask Mark, you might be able to answer that better than I could.
I'm just trying to understand it, that's why, yeah.
Good evening. So that was certainly a challenge. It was certainly a question asked to us much earlier in the summer as well as what are we going to do with our instrumental and our band teachers if they're not teaching within their discipline? I actually worked with Laura Newell on this and she's quite creative. And one of the things that we are doing, because at the elementary level, if you'll remember, we wanted to, again, we were tasked to create cohorts to keep children safe by minimizing movement and that meant minimizing movement for teachers as well. And we heard loudly and clearly from our music teachers that they didn't feel comfortable going into K through five classes on a daily basis. Understandable. So we created a, first, we created a semester schedule, but then we had the thought, well, some students like art better than they like music. And so by having them just in art for a long period of time, that's not really getting them the exposure that they need to multiple disciplines. So we created a unit schedule where students in grades, I think it's one, three and five are going to have art for four to five weeks, a unit of study, while the other K one and two, K two and four have a music unit. The instrumental teachers are actually going to support the instruction by going into those classrooms so that the music teachers actually can live stream in and vice versa. So Laura's come up with a real creative way to have the teachers actually support each other within the discipline. I hope that's helpful.
I'm not sure I fully understand it, to be honest with you. When you say like live streaming the music, like, so who's in there teaching the music class? There's, because there usually was a traditional, a general music teacher plus like a band or orchestra teacher at the elementary level. So who's teaching those one, three, five, K through two, K through four classes?
The general music teacher is still teaching. The art teacher is still teaching the lesson. We're asking the instrumental and the band teachers to go into the classroom to help support the instrumental, the general music teacher or the art teacher while they're delivering their lessons.
So there'll be two teachers in the room when there's a music class?
And/or if a music teacher is spread between two buildings or an art teacher is spread between two buildings and they are live streaming their instructions from their, their musical space or their art space, the instrumental teacher or the band teacher would be, actually be the supervising teacher in the room. Is that helpful?
That's helpful, but I didn't think that that.
Because we're also trying to eliminate travel for our itinerant staffs.
But I thought, Tony, we were trying not to have lives, I'm, that the kids are in the school having a live stream music lesson.
Sorry, am I off? Okay. It's a little, what Mark's talking about, there are small pockets where, like, we may have a teacher who is at point six at one building and they used to drive across town, do face-to-face, you know, point four at another building. On some of those unique circumstances, they did not, the teachers also weren't comfortable being in two different buildings. So it was finding a way to make sure there's a teacher in there with the children who's also music qualified and that other teacher who's assigned to actually put the lesson together and teach is the one that could be streaming. And again, part of that's all this complexity of, we have a lot of teachers that travel around the district and they don't want to go, not only go across K five in one building like a music teacher would normally do, they definitely don't want to be in two different buildings where there are around that many more people.
But isn't that true of all of our instrumental music teachers at the elementary level? They all split their time between buildings?
Mark, do you know the answer to that? I think, do they, and saying yes. So.
Not the core teachers.
Right. Not the general.
No, no, I understand, but the instrumental. So we're basically, so every, but every building has its own general music teacher at the elementary level, correct? Okay. So they wouldn't, it wouldn't be the general music teacher streaming in because they're in their building.
If they were teaching the class, they would be in their building? Mark, you, I don't know if you can answer that better than.
I'm saying is if there's one general music teacher per building in the elementary level, there's no reason they should be streaming because they're already in their building.
They're co-teaching with the instrumental teacher.
Right. But I'm just not sure I'm understanding the streaming part of it. If they're the teacher in the building, teaching, like that they've been in the building teaching their students, they're not moving from building to building, forget about the second instrumental teacher coming in to help. Why aren't they in the classroom teaching?
They are.
Okay. So that's, I'm not sure where the streaming comes in then.
Streaming comes in if you have an itinerant staff and they're traveling between buildings and we're trying to minimize the exposure between the two buildings. That's the only case where you're having that.
But that, but that's the secondary teacher is what you're telling us.
Depends on where the share is, if it's between a middle school and an elementary school or two elementary schools, because we do have a number of itinerant instrumental music teachers. There's not an.
Instrumental, but I'm saying, but not the general, but not the main music teacher. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, this is extremely complicated. So I, I'm just going to end my comments and questions with, if nothing else, I think it's important that everybody be flexible and creative because I think, in a very succinct way, I want to say, I think you're getting a sense that the board really cares deeply about maintaining and Peter can sum it up better than I can, that the instrumental programs be included in some shape or form. So I think we have to keep having a dialogue and questions and, and understanding that it's very complex and there's a lot of constraints. And whether we can fix some of those constraints, Gordon, and get some, well, you know, there, the doors haven't opened yet, so you never know. So, okay, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I was going to say, Mr. Beinste and Mr. Healy certainly know me well enough to know that I too am like a dog with a bone. So once I get my, you know, claws into something, I don't easily walk away. Music really soothes the soul of the savage beast. And to me, it is, you know, it is so much woven into the part of the fabric of our programs from kindergarten all the way through graduation. Sitting at our graduation, Mr. D'Amico can certainly remember me sitting on stage weeping at countless graduations at the fifth grade Glendale, listening to the songs that they were, the chorus performed. Sitting in this stadium auditorium, hearing our children who didn't find their place in other ways, who found their place in the music room. And while I completely understand again, all of the issues, I, I know how hard the three of our middle school principals have worked all summer and this is certainly no judgment on them. I just know at the start of our discussions for return to school planning, it was always, music will not necessarily be in the same form at the start of the year, but we will be working through bringing it back. And it was the moment that I heard, we won't be giving lessons. And it was the moment that I heard, we won't be giving lessons, instrumental lessons or offering chorus this year that struck me. To me, we have so many incredible staff members. We have the opportunity, if we are not going to bring this back at the first few days of school, the first few weeks or the month of school, that is, that's fine and understandable. We have the opportunity to learn from others who have done it and improve upon it. I truly, truly, truly ask of you, within the confines of health and safety of our students, but also remembering that the second tenet of the reopening of school plan from the state was to focus on social emotional learning. This is a huge part of it for so many of our students. And if there is a way that we can work together to find some sort of creative avenue, using our teachers' ideas and suggestions, having us reach out if it is that you need more funding for staff or a different type of space, please let us know how we can do that. Because I, for one, know that losing a year of instruction in that can decimate a child's love and passion for performing, can decimate a child's chance and opportunity to reach some of the heights that we've seen. It is, you wouldn't want to take away a year of language arts for them either. It's, it's in the same manner, it's just, you know, different part of their brain. So this is no judgment on the incredible work that our middle school principals have done, no judgment on the work that Mr. D'Amico has done to really make sure that all of our students are healthy and safe when they return to our schools. I just want to make sure that this conversation isn't over. And, you know, I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but I do want to thank you guys for listening and understanding how deeply we obviously care about the arts as much as you guys do as well. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Stowe.
All right, good evening. Nice to see everyone. This is actually, it's nice to see everyone live here and the rest of you on Zoom. I actually was thinking, one of the last meetings we had here at Cosco School, I ordered Uber Eats because we went that late. And then I shared my fries with a bunch of you. And we can't do that anymore. So just for a second to get, let's just take a step back. Like I am really not enjoying wearing this mask as much as I don't enjoy that we're cutting the music program. And like everyone sitting here tonight, I also have children that participate in the music program. And I actually had a cousin on Broadway. So it's a pretty important thing to my family, but we're in a global pandemic and, in case you guys don't know. And what the principals have done here is I guess what we have to do right now to open. But my focus wants to be on that. And then since you're, I think you've heard loud and clear, there's no one on this board that wants to think music is going away. And you really struck a chord with me, Christina Downey, even when you said the eighth grade to high school, because I never thought about that. And losing a whole year of anything is just not what I want to consider right now. So is there a way for the solution to be, let's, if it's a sense of the meeting or whatever it is, but can we say, this cannot come out of the curriculum permanently, let's try to find a way to serve what we've been telling people to, that we're going to open with 82% of our community going back, but that within, and we can say, within a month or whatever the timeline is, we want to see a proposal that somehow works this back into our day-to-day curriculum or after-school curriculum. I'm open to ideas, recognizing as the chair of the budget committee that we'll be getting to later, that might have some financial impact. And so I'm also going to need to see it and then decide and hear from the community and the BET, if that's something that we're also all willing to invest in. But let's first focus on the here and now. And maybe we can try to do a sense of the meeting or something along those lines that say, this is not something we're okay with permanently and we'd like to revisit it within X date. That's my thought for the night.
Okay, Mr. Kelly.
Hi, I will be brief. I want band, orchestra, and chorus returned to the curriculum. I want to start on the ninth. Please tell me how we're going to do that.
Yeah, Dr. Jones.
My answer to that would be we go hybrid. And if the board wants to decide that tonight, it would still be very difficult for them on their schedules. I, and they would have to speak to that because the ninth, when you think about scheduling and the hours that it goes in, I don't even know that they could put it back in. It would be rebuilding everything. So, you know, it definitely would take hybrid from the management side, from the scheduling side. I don't, I don't think it could be done.
So in your opinion, it can't be done?
By the ninth, it can't be done. And now, middle school principals, you could speak to that.
You know, in order, in order to offer it sooner rather than later, there would have to be a commitment to go hybrid like the high school for the year. You couldn't bounce from hybrid to everyone in person in a cohorted model. That, that, that couldn't happen. And you'd have to then run like the high school does, their normal, regular schedule, right? So the normal course offerings, the normal scheduling in a hybrid fashion. So you're talking about hand scheduling and every single student and redoing the master schedule in, what, three days? I, it can't, it can't happen. I mean, I'm, I'll be completely honest and transparent with you, even if, even if we spent 24 hours a day between now and, and the ninth, I can't hand reschedule 850 students to a totally different master schedule. I mean, I'll always, you know, tell you like it is, but that can't happen. So, but also would mean that we're committing to a hybrid schedule long-term in the sense that if you bring them back in, you'd be bringing them back in without any sort of cohorting. And again, that wasn't the parameters and the guidelines we were given with any sort of cohorting, right? So as far as I understand it, the high school is running their normal schedule with just half of their students in the building. We're not running our normal schedule with a potential of half, we're running a cohorted model that if we had half the students out would still work and if we have everyone in will still work. That's totally different, totally different model. It's a totally different approach and it's a totally different set of parameters. So if you're talking about totally reshifting and resetting, but that's also a commitment. It's a commitment to say, we can't ever, we can't bring the kids back in, in a cohorted model at any point during the year without upending every student's schedule, different teachers, different, and that's not what's best for kids, in my opinion.
Thank you. That's a very good answer. Once again, thanks for all the hard work you guys are doing. So how can we start on the ninth and as quickly as possible bring band, orchestra, and chorus back in? I'm hearing that there's been information about not having it this year. That doesn't seem to be what the board wants. I'm getting the impression that the board wants to somehow get the band, orchestra, and chorus into the curriculum. So is there suggestions that since, in my opinion, it's extremely important to start on the ninth, I think we have to get our kids to school. But it seems also it's very important that we have the band, orchestra, and chorus in our curriculum. So I guess I'm asking for how, I'm asking for suggestions on how we're going to do that.
I'll just jump in here. Under the current constraints, being honest, I don't see it. If the constraints are different, we can make anything work, right? If the constraints were different, if it didn't have, if it wasn't everyone in the building, if it wasn't cohorting, if it was the high school model, for example, we could run the high school model and run our schedule, done what the high school's doing, but that was not the constraints we, we built the schedule under. So, you know, we're at the 11th hour now, school starts in two days. So blowing up the schedule, rebuilding it, it's just, it's a non-starter, it's just not going to happen. But if you give us a timeline and a change of constraints, if you were to say, if you were to go hybrid by Columbus Day, I mean, I'm just throwing things out there. I don't think this is what the community wants, but if that's, if that's a decision the board makes, you gave us the time to build the schedule, we could probably make something happen that looks like the high school schedule. But we were tasked with building a schedule that was all-in. And all-in had to make tough choices in order to ensure safety of all kids. We prioritize health and safety. Some things took a hit, and I want to be very clear, they didn't take a hit easily. And as Tom mentioned, you know, we all have investments in the music program. Tom is incorrect in saying that both my kids were successful in music. Emma was encouraged to take off softball, so, excuse me, up softball for her sophomore year. But Jake did, was an all-state cellist. They did do the Western Regionals for years. So I, I value the music program, I think we all do. But this is, I want to say it this way, but heavy cake and eat it too. I, I think we have to just, we have to prioritize. The priority right now is getting the kids in the building as safely as possible. We've built that schedule. If you want something different, give us different constraints, we could build a different schedule.
Thank you, Gordon. I've heard some compelling arguments from board members about the importance of band, orchestra, and chorus and how it's crucially important to have in our curriculum. So basically, I'm kind of stuck where, how am I going to vote if somebody brings a motion up and I've got to make a decision based on what I'm being told can't be done or would be very complicated in being done? And the compelling arguments my fellow board members made in support of making sure this gets put back in the curriculum. I, I'm stuck. I, I don't know how I can make this decision if somebody does make a motion. And I do appreciate what everyone's done, the compelling arguments of my fellow board members and, and the, the comments of the principals and the superintendent. So it's going to be a very tough decision if a motion is brought to the floor. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sherr.
Look, we need to, we need to back up a little bit. We, first of all, we need to turn off the smoke machine and we need to turn off the excuse factory. Let's just, let's just back ourselves up here, guys. We have a problem. Here's what the problem is. We, we're in this position because of decisions that were made. The board wasn't involved in those, but decisions were made months ago, okay? And we're now living with them. So, you know, and a lot of other school districts did not land where we land. There's a reason every, most star pure districts in Fairfield County are hybrid. They didn't just jump on hybrid. They got there because they started to look at the problem, they saw all of the difficulties, and they realized they were twisting themselves into a pretzel. Well, we didn't do that in Greenwich. We decided to keep twisting and twisting and twisting. We are where we are right now. This idea that we could actually, you know, play this game of, well, that would take to upend this and that, we need to park that. Because from my perspective, it would be an unmitigated disaster to play 52 pickup a couple of days before we're supposed to open. So this damage was done a long time ago, but now it's here and we all need to live with it and we all need to give our best effort to make it work. However, there are still major issues out there and we just all need to be very sober about them. As, as Ms. Hirsch said, this is a no judgment zone, folks. I mean, we're adults. This isn't about talking to little kids where we, you know, have to check all of our words. We need to just speak openly and honestly because we're all in the same boat of trying to help these 9,000 kids that we're responsible for educating. We need to break this problem down, okay? The high school and its program is, is, I'm really surprised by what I heard, okay? I'm very surprised that Ralph Mayo is actually supporting. And I'm confused also because the information keeps changing, right? I've heard from the last board meeting at the high school, Dr. Jones, you said, because I wrote it down, that we will not be delivering chorus or wind this year at the high school for health and safety reasons. You, when specifically asked, you didn't say, oh no, I'm delaying it and we'll see how it's going to work out. Now I'm hearing that it's delayed and we might work it out. I can't deal with the whip saw in this, in these conversations. The other thing I heard is that, I, I wrote it down, 36 times in this pandemic thing, it has been asserted by the administration, we're following the state of Connecticut guidelines. The state of Connecticut guidelines on music are exceptionally clear. And, and they say, particularly at the high school, you should be having music, you should be distancing, people should be wearing masks. Actually, for those of you who don't know, there are special singers masks that have already been developed and they're available. For wind instruments, they're masking the instrument to prevent the spread. There are lots of solutions that are out there. I find it fascinating tonight that there's nobody on this call from the music department. It, it's amazing to me that there's nobody here from the music department. We somehow wheeled out the, these three middle school folks who, they have probably the hardest problem in this whole thing. And I understand why they're here and I appreciate that they're explaining the problem and how they, what choices and trade-offs they had to make. But candidly, that has nothing to do with the high school. And it has nothing to do with the middle school. Now, I also heard someone say, well, we could have solved this problem or we might have been able to solve this problem if someone had helped us with space. By the way, private schools have all set up tents and they're using that space. So all that stuff we're talking about regulatory issues, I don't know what we're talking about, right? These teachers, has anybody asked, hey, board, will you give me the money to go get nine more teachers? Nobody ever brought that to the board. Has anybody thought about, as an example, giving stipends to those teachers who have five bill, five class billets a day? And we say, if you teach two more, we'll pay you more. We haven't talked about any of that. So the only point I'm trying to make is I recognize the constraints you guys have been given. And you guys are working your tails off to try to get schools open. Jason, I hear you loud and clear. It's a monumental task just to get schools open. But this is the part where I'm saying, trying to communicate to you guys in, oh, one other thing. Let me just get there before I make this last point. I just heard from Mark, a piece of information that I didn't know, which is in some places at the elementary school, we're doubling up teachers, music teachers. I didn't even know that. Okay, so in one place, we don't have enough. In another place, we're doubled up. And I'm not hearing from Laura Newell on, well, could we swap these teachers around? I haven't heard, we had another meeting the other day where we're hiring 26 new substitute or teachers for the online school. So teachers wasn't a constraint, the BET didn't make it a constraint, the board didn't make it a constraint. I don't know, anybody's reached out to the community to say, hey, anything out there who would be, will work with us part-time, a couple of days a week? I haven't seen that one, okay? So, and the one thing I want to reiterate to the board, because I think we're all trying to solve the problem and I think we've all been incredibly constructive, thank you. I think we've all been listening carefully for the last hour and a half. But guys, you need to understand how the board works under our bylaws and under state law. Okay? This curriculum is already set. The superintendent has an obligation to teach it and deliver it. Okay? She isn't relieved of that obligation unless the board takes action. So the board needs to now change the curriculum, remove this stuff from the curriculum. And per Peter Bernstein's note to Karen Kowalski this week, guess what has to happen in order that to happen? It needs to be proposed with the new and revised curriculum. It needs to go through a meeting of discussion. It needs to have public comment and then it can only be put up to a vote at the subsequent meeting. So this idea that we can just like willy-nilly not teach our curriculum because it's a global pandemic, that's not how you govern the school system. And there's no magic law coming out of Hartford that said you can just not govern the school system per statute. So I think we need to break this problem down. I think the middle schools have a very severe problem, which they have explained to us in detail tonight. Thank you very much. I do think as a board, we need to come together and give them some better guidance and support now that the problem is understood. As Mr. Kelly just said as an example, perfect question, how do you make this happen? I want to hear from the building principals and the, and the music department on how to solve that. That's what I would like them to go away and do, and I think I proposed that about an hour ago. And I'd like to hear their ideas. And if it's an unsolvable problem at the end- And if it's an unsolvable problem at the end of that process, it's an unsolvable problem at the end of the process, and we have to adjust our curriculum to reflect reality. Middle, elementary schools, I think music education, elementary schools is important, but with no offense, it's a lot less important than it is at the middle school, and the middle school's a lot less important. Well, maybe not, because it feeds the high school. I hear Mark saying he's got some teaching capacity there. I'd love to see if we make some hard trade-offs in the elementary school to create some teaching capacity to supplement and do what the middle school principals have said might be necessary to put the program back. The other part is, the high school, okay, go out tomorrow and buy singing masks, go out tomorrow and buy the masks that are necessary for wind. It is sheer utter nonsense. And I know it's true. And any board member should go down there with their own tape measure. Because we co-horted the high school, and everybody's in half, I know with the spaces that we built to the tune of $46 million, that there is sufficient space down there for them to be able to conduct these classes. If they have to wind up using the auditorium, they have to wind up using the auditorium. But, you know, it's time to get real about this. And I'm, I think, I've checked my anger about this. This is what, this thing was an Easter egg hunt, and it was a surprise to the board at the last meeting. But at this point, we need to be directive. Dr. Jones, with all due respect to you, okay? I appreciate what you're saying about health and safety. There's no one on this board that doesn't support health and safety. The competent authorities in this are the state of Connecticut. I haven't seen, other school districts in Connecticut, our peer districts are running these full programs from the beginning, okay? So we need to just figure out, and we need to, you need to deliver the curriculum as best you can. I understand the problem at the middle school, but the other two divisions of the school system, until the board changes the curriculum, it's necessary for you to deliver it. And if you need additional things from the board to give to students to make that happen, we just need to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Kowalski.
Thanks, Mr. Bernstein. So, look, I'm in full agreement, and I echo Mr. Scher's comments. I think we need to take the time, I think we need to break this down and figure out how to solve the problem, and what the, and what needs to happen in order to solve that problem. I think music, music defined as band, chorus, and orchestra needs to be brought back into the middle schools and elementary schools as soon as possible. And I don't know what that is, but, you know, Dr. Jones, you had mentioned January, that's not as soon as possible. That doesn't work for me. And it needs to happen sooner than that. And I think, Ms. Stowe, I appreciate your comments with respect to the sense of the meeting. I think the sense of the meeting, in my opinion, is that we have, and if I'm speaking on a turn, please tell me, everybody, right now, that we have eight members of the board that want band, chorus, and orchestra back as soon as humanly possible. And I say that because I'm hearing what the middle school principals have described as being a complete heroic effort to come up with the schedule. But I, I'm not giving up, and I think there is a way to do it. I just need to be, I need more information. I need to be told what they need. And what I've heard today is, look, if I had nine additional teachers, and I'd have to move some things around, I'd have to give it some thought, but maybe that's a possibility. There's stipends and obviously payments that are being made and being offered to hiring teachers to teach after school. I think that the question should be posed to the teachers that we currently have, whether or not, if they got that stipend, would they take one of the periods that they are not teaching, and not, and not, not just teach five periods, but teach six or seven periods, if that meant they got the stipend and they could run the program? I think these are all great questions, and we need answers to them. And we need a list of what, the board needs a list of what the each school needs, what set of music teachers need, so that we can weigh it and decide if we can give it to them, and to make a decision that way. But to take it out of the program, out of the curriculum for a year, is just unacceptable. And, you know, elementary kids, by the way, with respect to music, have been pulled out for years, and they've been, and they've been working in all kinds of spaces, including hallways, teaching orchestra and chorus, wherever they could find the space. I'm sure if we had the opportunity to speak to our music teachers, they would be having creative ways in order to help us solve the problem, and I invite them to do so. And I'd like to hear from them.
Okay, Ms. Olson.
Tony, you had said that hybrid is starting over, right? Well, you had said that hybrid is starting, you don't have to answer that. I think you're still on mute. But you had said that hybrid is starting over. Wasn't the requirement was to create three plans, hybrid, remote, and full return? Is that correct? I can't hear you.
Yes, we can either go remote, hybrid, or have a full return. It's those three options. And if we went hybrid, that's why, hybrid for us right now would be a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and it would be the kids that are onsite in person.
No, no, I get that. Sorry to interrupt. But wasn't, wasn't what we, what we told that the guidance was to plan three, we were told to plan for three, told to create three plans upfront.
Yeah, we did. It's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday was full distance for the high school, Thursday, Friday. We could do that in elementary.
No, K12, sorry, I'm going to cut you off. I think I'm not clear. We were told, we were told, Kate, we were told, going into this K12, to create three plans, hybrid, full return, and full remote. And it seems like if we're starting over, from what it sounds like, if we were starting over to go hybrid, that says to me that we didn't create three plans. I'm talking at all levels, though. I'm not just talking about high, I know you did hybrid at the high school. I'm saying the three plans that we're told to create.
Yeah, it's much, it's much more complex than that, because right now, when we look at what the middle school is doing, they're using every bit of their space as well. So if we decided we wanted...
No, I get...
So, so we have, we have our alphabet alignment, A through LEG, and we have the LEH through Z across the district K12.
I know, that wasn't exactly my question. My question was, did we, if we had fully planned three plans, if we had done, if we had really created three plans, hybrid, remote, and full return, and really fleshed those out, then we wouldn't need to be starting over to go hybrid. If we, if we had planned all three, starting six months ago, the three scenarios, then we wouldn't be so locked into this, this, this point, correct?
Megan, maybe I can help here. I think what Tony and the principals were saying is, even if you had gone to hybrid, you still would have the same issue of trying to fit music into that schedule. So to go to hybrid now, they basically need to rebuild to include music, because the hybrid plan they've got doesn't have that built in, doesn't it?
No, I get that, I get that. I'm just saying that, I'm saying it's, it's backward planning. Had we, it's something that I think we could have, we could have done had we planned it earlier in advance. I just don't think we fleshed out the three plans in time to give us the flexibility.
I don't know if this is a place to answer, or maybe, maybe help clarify. I don't, or not. I'll be quiet.
Go ahead, Jason.
The, the hybrid model at middle school is contingent upon the full in being a cohorted model, instead of a hybrid where it's your normal schedule, that would normally run with half the students. So the, the full return with cohorting stipulations and guidelines is what drives the challenges. Instead of, if all along, it was everyone full in without cohorting, and those social distance guidelines and distance between students, or hybrid, or, or full-on remote, it's a different, that's a different scenario. That's, that's more what the high school is, is operating on. You know, the, the middle school model is, the full-in model is a cohorted socially-distanced model. So that's why, if you switched at this point from the full-in model to hybrid, that's why it becomes a do-over of the master schedule. If you're saying you want to offer everything the way we've always done, then if you're going to return for everyone in, you're returning without any cohorting, without any social distancing, that, that's the difference. And so we planned all along under the guidelines that the, the full in, the hybrid, and the remote would work, assuming on the guidelines of the full in had the cohorting and all those other expectations.
Yeah, no, I know. And it, but it seems like one plan was fully fleshed out. It was like, remote, I mean, full in was fully fleshed out, and then hybrid came off of that, rather than really developing three possible plans. And this is in no, this is in no way to disrespect the principals. I think you were, all three of you were given constraints, and these were the confines, and you have to fit into this particular mold, and I don't, I don't envy the position you're in. So I, I think it was a, and I, when I say lack of planning, I'm not, I'm not referring to you three. I'm talking about really fleshing out those three possibilities. Just doesn't seem like it was done from a higher-up administrative level, level to its, to maximum extent, or we would have more possibilities. Because as was said earlier, there are multiple schools around us that are incorporating band, chorus, and, band, chorus, and orchestra, and not running into this problem in the 11th hour. And I, my hats off to you, like I said, for all the work that going into it. But, you know, and the community has spoken up about music, and I feel like the community in this sense has been ignored. So I think it's important that Dr. Jones goes back and, and comes back to the drawing board, because I, I think the sense of the meeting was a great idea, Kathleen, and I, I'm one of the eight that says we need to make it happen. And I'm sorry that we were, I'm sorry that the principals were constrained like this.
So Megan, just to respond, the other districts that are going back hybrid, that was always the plan. They actually didn't build out the, the full plan like we have. So they're, they're not going back full. All right, Ms. Hirsch.
Again, I'm not entirely sure, and I feel terrible, that it seems to be centered specifically on middle school. I think for me, and I can't speak for Karen, but I, I think I might be on the same path, is that we were looking at ways to bring this back K12. This certainly was not directed just towards that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I also wanted to just say, I don't think this is a lack of planning. Things were planned so deep and so well and so detailed. I think this is simply just a lack of communication, with so many operational details to get through. I don't think it was an intentional miscommunication either. But what I don't think I want to do is create any more confusion with the discussion that we've had tonight. I don't want the headline tomorrow to be that the board is directing the middle school to change their plans and their schedules at the last minute. Our parents need to be able to move forward, knowing what's going to happen on September 9. Our teachers and our educators or administrators need to know what's happening on September 9. And I, and I think we're going to stay the course in that. I just think that we are asking for the possibility of hearing what kind of creative solutions that we can hear from our, you know, when we put our heads together for this. And I just want to again, reiterate, I think, you know, you guys have done an incredibly wonderful job, and I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to cause confusion. So, thank you.
Ms. Kowalski.
So, Peter, I think my issue here is, and I think we're all in agreement, that none of us want a curriculum change, and band, music, and chorus, orchestra have to move forward. And I think we need to come to a resolution with that with the board tonight, that in fact, we are all in agreement that band, chorus, and orchestra must be put back into the, into, into the curriculum and into the schedule. And then we need to figure out how to do that, providing the assistance with the music, the music teachers and the principals. But I think it's important that we, as a board, decide that, yes, we're in agreement that these three subjects, these classes are part of our curriculum, and we, as a board, want them back into the schedule.
Mr. Scher.
Yeah, in order to move us forward, I just want to reiterate, I, I think at this stage, less confusion is better. You know, we have other problems with our reopening plan. We're not even meeting in some schools in the district, the three feet social distancing minimum, which is half of what the CDC guideline is. So, you know, we got other problems in other places, particularly in the elementary schools, and those are going to have to get dealt with, and what have you. I, I think we need to reduce this problem down as component parts. I think it's pretty clear what direction to go with the high school. I think, you know, we are, we have a program at the middle, at the elementary school. Maybe there's an opportunity for the administration to move some step around. That's a management issue. That's not for the board to take up. I think we need to be really clear, and I think it is pretty clear, my sense of the board is, is that we understand that the music program that is not consistent with our curriculum is going to go off the gate on the 9th, next week in the middle schools, as it is presented by these three gentlemen tonight. I mean, that's a governance failure and a problem, but it's not their fault. You know, it, it's just, it's something we need to catch and clean up. What I'd like to hear, and this is the task that needs to be given to the superintendent, because that's the only person we work with, is, I would like to see from the superintendent, when's our next meeting, Peter?
The 17th, we have a fairly full agenda that night.
Okay. I'd like to see by the 17th, which is 14 days from now, I'd like to be certain that the, that the superintendent brings back to the board any, a, a set of options of how we can deliver per already our decisions we've made on our music curriculum at the middle schools and what it would take. And we need to hear, I think, from the middle school administrators and the music department, my advice would be, any and all creative thinking. Nothing's crazy. Do not constrain yourself on money. If you guys come back and tell us it's going to cost $5 million to do, you know, we probably won't do that. But I, we got to this place because someone put in constraints at the beginning, and we need this process to be unconstrained, so that we can hear the best thinking from our educators, from our administrators. I call it the crazy idea department. And we may still wind up in the place we are today, but I need to hear that thinking. And the next time we get together, I would also like to see our music educators participating jointly with the middle school administrators. But I think the high school's clear. I think that program should go forward, and the board should be very clear about that. And I think we are clear, it's already our curriculum, and it needs to be taught. If there are problems with that, I would like to hear those on an emergency basis from the staff, but I haven't heard anybody do those. And then, elementary school, sounds like it's squared away. I think we just narrow this problem to the middle school program, and the rest of it should go forward, consistent with the CSD, Connecticut State Department of Education guidelines, which are published in Addendum 7, consistent with what other school districts in Granite, in Fairfield County are as well doing. I don't think we're out of line with anybody. We're actually out of step in what we're doing compared to other people. We have a unique set of problems, I guess. But we ought to figure out what we can learn from those people, and that's what I think we do. If it's necessary to have a curriculum change at the middle school as the, on a temporary basis, so for 2021, the board needs to take action to modify that curriculum so that Toni Jones is not, if not teaching it, she's not out of compliance. It wouldn't be fair to her to leave that out there if she, if we're, we all decide as a board, it's undoable, and we leave out there a curriculum that she clearly isn't in a position to teach. That's my suggestion on how to move forward.
Ms. Stowe.
That's, I just was thinking, this is what I was saying to Karen, this is the advantage to being live. Karen and I were able to circle up here a little bit. And one of the things I'm thinking, and maybe you're going to say, Peter, this doesn't make sense, is to do a sort of a generic sumar. You have one? Oh, I just spent time writing this. But if you don't like it, Karen, look at, well, let's see if it gets a second, I guess. Hold on. So, we, the Board of Education, would like to, at our next business meeting on September 17th, see a plan that reintroduces the music program in a reasonable timeframe. At that meeting, we would like the conversation to include our revised schedule with music, and the impact it may have from the schedule changes and the cost of doing so. the schedule changes and the cost of doing so.
Okay call question here I mean how is this?
Hang on we somebody's just made a sorry Christina somebody's just made a motion is there a second for it? Okay well the motion's on the table so do you want to make a do you want to make a second or do you want to try to modify it?
I'd like to modify it.
Okay so do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay so Ms. Kowalski you want to go ahead and try to make a motion?
I would change it to say we the Board of Ed would like at our next.
I bet I did not know that did you?
No I do we at the Board of Ed would like to at our next business meeting on September 17th.
See a plan?
See a plan to reintroduce the music program as defined as band music and orchestra.
Chorus?
Oh yes thank you band music sorry band chorus and orchestra. At at the middle school and elementary school. And then at the meeting we would like the conversation to include.
The revised schedule with I guess those defined programs and the impact it might have from basically the cost of doing so. Peter yours better do you want me to remove mine and you go with yours?
Mine's actually really simple why don't we do you want a second yours and then you can withdraw I'll just tell you what I was gonna.
Sure second and then my second.
Okay so Ms. Kowalski's motion Ms. Doherty's second so I was gonna go with something simple such as a sense of the meeting that the superintendent explore and present to the Board of Education at its meeting on the 17th how to deliver the music curriculum at middle school and all at elementary school for as well I mean I'm I'm agnostic I just I want to make it simple I think Toni's heard our conversation I think I think she's probably pretty clear we can ask her if she has what she needs but.
Maybe she has what she needs I just I think that the key parts to this are that the Board of Ed wants by our next meeting a plan to have to reinstitute the curriculum of band chorus and orchestra back into the elementary and middle schools and the conversation should include principals and music staff as well as a proposed budget going forward I don't want to put a timeframe on it because I want it now and I'm afraid that if I say within a reasonable time somebody's gonna get all definitional on me and say this is within reason and I want it yesterday so that's my problem with the timing.
So Karen one thing I do want to point out because the 17th is just around the corner next week is reopening I worry very much about giving them enough time to actually do something so I'm I'm looking at our meeting calendar we've got a board retreat on October 3rd it's a Saturday I I don't want them to come back on the 17th and tell you they haven't finished their work and you'd be disappointed I just want to be realistic about what you're gonna get by that point Ms. Hirsch.
Sorry about that I support both of the idea behind the somers and I understand the need to wanting to do this sooner rather than later I would just like to voice my one concern about suggesting that we put this on for the 17th which is barely two weeks away and within that period of time our principals and educators need to be able to focus on getting our schools open after a long holiday weekend and focus on the first week or two of school I'm concerned that I don't want to push this off too far but I am also concerned that if we rush them to provide something that it won't be as well thought out and possible to proceed forward with if we rush it that would be my one concern I know that October 3rd feels like a long time away but it gives the opportunity for our schools to at least open and our principals to be able to focus on what they really need to focus on which is the return of our children and then be able to focus on bringing them music it'll give them actually time to put you know create something that is doable it's just my thoughts it's.
Ms. Downey.
I'm concerned about just doing a somers generally because I feel that procedurally when we have a meeting and we ask the superintendent to go and do something and come back and report back to us at another meeting we don't engage in a somers every time we make that request so it feels to me that we're then going down a slippery slope that why do we do it sometimes why do we do it not other times as opposed to simply making a request I think Dr. Jones has amply heard the comments tonight I think the middle school everybody's on this call is knows kind of the mood of the board if you want to call it that so a somers doesn't really achieve more than that and I I'm concerned that this is gonna then be the way we proceed every time we have a request for some information or follow-up to a report or the like so as a procedure I I agree that we want to get it but as a procedural matter I'm troubled by doing a somers in this instance and kind of generally for these sorts of things other than when it's to give the community a sense of where our feeling is but I think it's pretty clear.
Yes Christina just to respond to that sorry just the response to that is we want to be sure to give a clear direction to the superintendent right we expect the deliverable there are times when we ask questions and she's very responsive to us but this is one where I think there's a feeling among members of the board especially the ones making a motion that they want to make sure this is very loving. Mr. Scher.
I'm where Ms. Downey is I I think you'd have to be kind of I mean the superintendent has to discern where the board is that's you know that comes with the territory I I'm where you are Christina sometimes we do it sometimes we don't sometimes to do it sometimes we follow this procedure sometimes we don't I for me I'm just maybe a little too anal it's a little too jerky for me so I think it's pretty clear where I am with this is guys and let me just I mean I'll support whatever you want to do look you'd have to be not paying attention to come out of this meeting and not realize that there's eight people who want this curriculum taught and they want this curriculum taught as soon as possible and I think you'd have to be not following along if you didn't come out of the meeting and realize that everybody understands there's a problem at the middle school but at the other schools it's pretty clear go figure out how to implement that so I don't really understand why we're bringing up elementary too but I I'm not gonna I'm not gonna die on this hill I appreciate what Ms. Hirsch said or Ms. Hirsch said and others I'm really concerned about the staff because they do have to open schools and they have much bigger problems than this in opening schools but at the same time which is why I keep bringing this up those of us who know these leaders musical leaders and these buildings okay the real thinking is gonna have to come from them particularly in the middle school on how could we possibly do this and then they're gonna have to sit down with Jason and and the rest of the middle school principals and pitch their ideas it's not gonna start and end with the headmaster in that or a school leader in that school and I think these people are probably chomping at the bit to maybe whether she brings us a final answer on the 17th I would most likely like to hear and I think you have to.
You froze.
On the 17th knowing us as a crowd I'd be.
Yeah Peter I think we froze.
But I think I'd like to hear the idea by the 17th I'm sorry was I muted?
No you keep freezing.
Oh it keep freezing.
Karen a bandwidth challenge.
Well what I'm saying is I think we've really.
Yeah I think we're gonna turn it over to Ms. Kowalski.
Sure I think I knew where Peter might be going with this is that look we may not have a final answer by the 17th on what we should do going forward but I think we should hear on the 17th and have it on the calendar to at least hear some of the outside the box thinking of what's being happened what the music department is thinking and how they can put this into place and I think this is going to be a longer dialogue and I'd like to start that dialogue sooner rather than later with the key stakeholders and the key stakeholders here are absent tonight which is our music our music teachers.
I mean I will commit to putting it on the agenda for the 17th but we can go ahead the motions on the on the table.
Should we just?
Do you want to we'll put it on the agenda I mean it's up to you whether you want to move forward or vote.
I'm in whatever I'm in different.
I make motion put it on the agenda for the 17th.
Oh hang on we gotta deal with the motion you have on the floor which is the motion about what you want.
I can withdraw the motion.
Do you want to withdraw the motion okay it's Karen Kowalski's motion so.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay she's gonna withdraw the motion I will commit to putting it on the agenda for the 17th and I'll just ask Dr. Jones do you have what you need from the Board of Education?
I understand what the board is asking and is the board asking us to also entertain hybrid undoing social distancing and cohorting I I need to hear each board member say those three items are they important to you or not because we we know because we've spent months on this we're gonna have to give in some of those areas or staffing and I maybe you know with plenty of staff they could definitely you know make it work but I think they've said they know that's a million dollars in staffing and we certainly can bring that that's probably the easiest thing to do but I would like the board to address those other areas cohorting in middle school social distancing is that important and hybrid do you support hybrid if that's what it takes?
Alright Mr. Scher I see your hand up.
Toni I I think the question is premature but you know if you want to hear it I'm interested in hearing any and all innovative thinking from our staff and I'm not constraining it but I think it's pretty clear I I think I've said this before I'm not gonna pay play 52 pick on a hybrid with all due respect I realize this is an irritation to the administration don't worry I'm incredibly irritated with the administration about this entire process so it's even Steven what I'd what I'd we are where we are we need to move forward what I would like to hear is all the innovative solutions that are developed by the music department and the music educators I'd like to hear from them on the 17th and I'd like to hear what they could come up with if they come up with some really super crazy plans that can't be implemented in a reasonable amount of time or they cost too much money or what have you that's a decision for us on the board to make I don't want to pre-constrain the thinking I I have found it's most productive to work with our educators they're not sophisticated administrators they're not sophisticated managers they're not board members and I'm totally respectful of what it is they come up with as crazy as it may be I know I would be hearing that from them and I know what I would expect to hear from them so no and if you're asking would I flip over the middle school model which I'm disappointed you're presenting that as kind of an absolute in this.
No but those.
Hold on let me finish. Okay is no I would not rip up the the middle school schedule and blindly flip us to hybrid just to make a music program work no I wouldn't and I don't mind saying that out loud but at the same time I'm not convinced that there aren't other alternatives that haven't been fully developed that we could consider as a group and I really need your leadership which I think we can get to bring back you know this is a problem we're all facing together and let's see if we can get some innovative thinking from our staff from our best people and let's look at that and then we'll make the decision together on the 17th or later.
It would be really and I mean this sincerely I don't I don't go down easy either on a challenge I hear what you're asking us to do and we've got eight board members asking that and I mean sincerely I need to understand if the board is willing to give on social distancing hybrid and cohorting staffing because that's what drove the middle school model and made it incredibly difficult and what I can tell you is that music teachers focus on music certainly we can look at how you could group children but the safety side of things we have spent the entire summer studying and we're trying to have a really safe entry and I you know we want to do everything we can to have this entry last longer than three weeks or four weeks and so it is important because for us to consider their ideas we need to know that the board is supportive of of going hybrid that's a that's a big change for us in Greenwich and and also on the.
Peter please let us finish.
Yeah and also just on the cohorting and social distancing because for us to consider ideas we need to know where the board is on that those three items.
You asked a specific question I'm gonna give you a specific answer what I would hope they would come in and do on social distancing which was a very specific question you asked it's a good question and they come in on other things is I would hope that they would sit down as a team. It's on the table a copy for everybody to read this is the problem set I give you I'd give them I would give them the problem set of here's addendum seven from the Connecticut State Department of Education here's the curriculum from the Board of Education which they already know front and back guys please come back and think about how this could be implemented and we need to put that in a presentation for review by the board it may not result in anything but I'd like your best thinking on addendum seven from the Connecticut State Department of Education which is very clear on social distancing and music because there are different standards than the regular classroom and our curriculum and have them bring it back it may change nothing at the end but and I can tell you a priori I'm very unlikely to approve hiberning you know you guys could bring that in as a solution but I'm not likely to approve that because it has dramatic ramifications through the rest of the system but on your other two questions that's what I would suggest to you I hope that's clear.
It is clear and I do just want because you pointed out that all of the other districts are able to do this it's because they're hybrid or full remote we are we're the last holdout trying to actually run our full middle school so I think the board needs to be aware of that again some of the districts have already gone full remote and they're making it work because they're hybrid and they have half the kids and they've gained they don't have the space issues we also have another large high school not too far from us that if they want to return they have a brand new high school and lots of empty space there's just there's lots of challenges in that regard but for hybrid it this you're you're asking for a huge challenge and we take on the challenge but.
I hear you loud and clear I hear you loud and clear.
Okay Ms. Kowalski.
Tony it's 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 really sort of bizarre to me that you're asking us how you feel about hybrid a few days before school starts I I can tell you how I feel about I feel about social distancing that we should be following the CDC guidelines of six feet I don't know I think in that I think it would have made more sense to have all three plans presented to the board and then we could have given some guidance on this rather than ask at this point how do we feel about hiberning I think that I the hiberning addresses cohorting because it helps with social distancing so I never got to it was never brought to me until now which I do agree is really late in the game too late in the game in a lot of ways I'm in favor of it I may be the only one but I never got to have that presented as an option until this stage in the game so I find it I I still am very concerned about the lack of planning.
Tony if I'm hearing you right if I'm hearing you right you're asking us would we want to move to hybrid in order to fit this in the the answer for me is no I truly believe the right model is what we've got which is own entry in middle school going back full time as best we can that said obviously I do want to see the music program end up back in I am not interested in using cohorting that is coming from the epidemiologists as is the social distancing the three feet is what Connecticut's recommending it's what other organizations are recommending I understand where. I understand where the CDC is, although they've bounced around on a lot of things recently that I'm not so sure I believe in either. So, anyway, that's my two cents. Ms. Stowe.
I'm going back to what I said at the beginning of the meeting, which is, we're trying our best to open on September 2nd. We have heard loud and clear from the community that they'd like to go back and try our best. Let's see what happens. Obviously, every day brings new data, but at this point, and what I also want to say is that these three principals, this administration, and frankly, all the board members who've given up their entire summer have worked very hard this entire summer. I know none, no one took vacation, and I just think to imply otherwise is truly disturbing. And so, I'm going to go back to the fact that everyone worked incredibly hard, we're probably all a little bit tired, but we're doing our best to hopefully provide the community with what they've asked for, and we understand we can do safely through cohorting and social distancing. So, let's get that going, let's start on Wednesday, and then let's find out how we can get this music program back in in a safe way and as reasonable a time as possible.
All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. I think we've pretty much talked this one to the end. Thank you, everybody, for the input. We look forward to hearing more on the 17th. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is our budget item. So, I will turn it over, I guess, to Dr. Jones for start, and then to Mr. O'Keefe.
Yes, I think we'll start out with Mr. O'Keefe, you ready?
Can you hear me? Okay. At this time of the year, we normally revisit policy 3110, which is the budget planning document, and for the most part, the document remains unchanged, but I do want to highlight three changes that we added to the bottom of page two as it relates to the operating budget of things that we will intend to address as we go through the budgeting cycle. Item 16, 17, and 18 on the bottom of page two. Number 16 would have us considering restoration of items that we had removed from the budget in order to achieve the 2021 town-approved budget. 17 is considering to add to the 2122 budget, 17 and 18 actually, adding to the budget for 2122 for things that were not included in the 2021 budget. So, similar to 16, but it's a little bit different in that they were never budgeted in the first place. So, those are the major changes that we'll be considering, and the board will consider, you know, ultimately, you know, when they go forward with their budget proposal. And then on page three, there's a very minor changes in line items three and eight, and, but it's not material. The material changes were adding 16, 17, and 18 on the bottom of page two. That's it.
Sean, maybe I can kick off, or actually, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stowe, because I, no, I see your hand. Ms. Stowe.
Um, this is great, thank you, Sean. I know that it seems hard to be planning for 2022 right now, when we're just trying to get our doors open, but we need to. And one of the things I appreciate that you added these items to the operating budget, the one thing I noticed is in capital, we talked about input from school communities and other stakeholders, and maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see that in the operating budget, which surprises me, because I know we've had, this is sort of the template we used, but is it possible we missed that?
I'm sorry, which item on the capital?
So, on capital, I see a number six, just that we would, of course, be soliciting input from school communities and other stakeholders, but I don't see that same concept for the operating budget.
Yeah, there would be, there would be similar in the operating side as well.
Yeah, so we should probably just somehow add that in.
It would be in both.
Right.
So, we'll add that.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, we usually do this in the spring. Traditionally, this is where the RTM votes on the budget, so it's a little odd to be in the labor, because here we are. Have you started to look back and do some analysis on your sort of zero budget or kind of level services budget?
I do. I, in fact, I did, I worked up some numbers. If you look at, when you consider items 16, 17, and 18, that would, if we started at the current level of budget for 2021, and add in items related to 16, 17, and 18, it would be a fairly considerable amount of money that we would have to restore to the, for the purposes of 2122. I haven't yet finalized on the numbers, but it would be a considerable amount.
And I guess that's before you've done any work to look for additional savings, and then you're learning. So, it's for challenge, because it is ours.
That's correct.
And I would imagine the Budget Committee, this is my signal to Ms. Stowe.
I was just about to say that. I know that you're a little busy, but maybe in the next couple of weeks, we could try to arrange a time for the Budget Committee to get together and start vetting, especially 16, 17, and 18, because I recognize that's going to be a big change. But else, I'll reach out to Joe, Peter, and Christina are on that committee with me.
And I do know from conversations with the BET Budget Chair, they are starting to work on the budget guidance a little earlier this year than they normally will. Of course, they've got the same unclear picture the rest of us have, just based on what's going on out in the world. So, we will be talking to them and communicating with them as they work. Hopefully, we'll have that guidance a bit earlier this year, so that will inform our process. We know what our contractual obligations are with respect to some of the larger expenses, and that's our people. You know, as we went through the budget process last year, I think it was made very clear, we invest our money in people, and so that's our biggest expense, it's usually our biggest increase in our budget. So, we'll be, we'll be starting at that point and going from there. Any other members having any comments on the budget process document? Mr. Scher, I see a physical hand up, so weird. Okay, go ahead.
Ain't it though? I guess I'm directing this to Sean and, and, and Dr. Jones. Sean, I would like to just call to your attention a couple of things that are in this guidance document, because the way this guidance document has, typically, it's done much earlier. We typically used to see this in May or June, because the finance staff needed to start the budget over the summer. So, I realize it's coming a little later, but fortunately, it's not a surprise. There's a, there's an item in here, let me pull it up so I can be sure and get it. The operating budget, which includes the document that, that we're given. Expenses related to enrollment, facility utilization, racial balance actions. So, if you could be sure that, as we went from a budget document that was done by Dr. Gildea, she kind of threw away a lot of the information in the budget document that, you know, provided us the information that was in each one of these items. I'm glad to talk to you and Dr. Jones about that separately, if you want more detail of what I'm really talking about, but I would be looking for that kind of level of detail, also particularly expenses by program and by school, because our building, our budget is built on a matrix. One side of the matrix is programs, which is really driven by curriculum mandates that the board has put in place, and then that's executed by building. That's kind of the conversation we've been having tonight regarding music. Some of that information kind of wasn't easily accessible when we take up the budget when you guys presented in November. So, I would like to be sure and, and, and be sure that we do that. And then the other part is, is that you may not be aware, I presume our chairman has discussed this with the superintendent, three years ago, our board, by vote, requested from the then superintendent, who I believe was Dr. Gildea, it may have been Sal Corte, gone back that far. We were looking for program effectiveness updates, program by program, so that when we got into any trade-off discussions that we would need to have as part of the budget process, that we had the information that we needed to put essentially wood behind the arrow, money behind the programs, the ones that were having the highest impact on our strategic goals, which is measured as student growth, individual student growth. And those, through all the changing of superintendents, through all the changing in superintendents, that work, I'm sure, got delayed, was never done, et cetera. I know that there was a restart done by Jen Lau, and she presented some spreadsheets that were just kind of a collection of existing data. It wasn't really a program review. So, to the degree that that work is underway, should have been underway, had been underway, is underway, I would hope it would be presented as part of the way to fulfill some of these items, one through 15. The last thing is, Sean, it would be helpful, particularly if we're going to have a growth rate proposed that is so dramatically higher than what is trend, multi-year trend, longitudinal trend. It would be great if you guys would come in in the first meeting where you present it of what does a budget look like with sensitivity to it? What does a budget look like? What is the administration recommending at this level, this level, this level, and this level? It isn't always helpful if, and I know it's been custom, to present a budget, we've never really been presented with budgets that are that too far above guideline, but if it's going to be really above guideline, it's not helpful for us to go through as a board two or three rounds of questions where we don't really get information to make, have intelligent conversations about trade-offs until we hit December. It's a lot more helpful if that comes in at the beginning. It's only necessary if you're going to be way above trend. If you're going to be near trend or near guideline, then we probably don't need it at the beginning. That's, or, I shouldn't say we, I wouldn't need it at the beginning, I can't speak for the other board members.
Peter, on the, there we go. Peter, on the, on the budget book stuff that you're proposing, the program by program, I think that's a great thing to bring up at your Budget Committee meeting, and maybe with the experience you've got, you can walk them through what the old budget book used to look like. I'm sure you have a stack of them somewhere hiding in the closet.
I've been trying to throw them out.
Yeah, I know, I try, I try to save too much, I think. On the program effectiveness updates, it's actually on the budget page last year, it's the instructional program snapshots. It's about 45 pages worth, so I don't know if you missed that in the budget development process, but it is actually there, there's the inventory, how they screened, so I'm sure they can take a look at that and see what needs refreshing this year, but that is, that is available.
What I was more talking about, I agree with you, it's in that book. What I was referring to is, we asked for program reviews, and Jill Gildea came in and proposed an entire process to go through those one at a time, and then I know it got lost in the sauce with Ralph, and then there was Tony, and so on and so forth. But those, when we were in the Budget Committee this past year, Jen Lau actually came in with Tony. I forget, Kathleen, you may remember which meeting that was. She came in and kind of gave us a restart of that. They knew they needed to do it. I'm sure they got distracted with other things, but I think we need to see that through to completion.
Okay. Any other members have any comments on this? Yes, Mr. O'Keefe.
Regarding your comment about the reporting and the detail, I have been working on that for five, six weeks. When I got here, I couldn't believe what we were reporting and the lack of detail. The BET members also commented, commented to me, Tony commented to me, she didn't like it either. So, I have been working on a reporting structure that will provide a summary level, and if there's a question at the summary level, you can dig into the detail readily. It'll be, and it'll be so much better organized, formatted, easier to understand what the budget's all about. The way it stands right now, it's, I would view, is not very helpful and not user-friendly.
I say thank you every day that you are running our finances now, Sean. I said that in the spring, I'm still saying the same thing. I'm so thankful you're here with your skill and talent.
All right, not seeing any other hands up. Mr. O'Keefe, thank you for your efforts today, and can't wait to see your future work. You've got quite the challenge ahead of you, and I hope your crystal ball is clear. All right, with that, Mr. Kelly, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
I'm going to happily second that, and we'll just do a quick roll call. Bernstein is a yes, no?
Yes.
Hirsch? Downing?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Scher.
Yes, and thank you, everyone, for a productive meeting.
Yes, thank you, we will see you again on the 17th. All right, have a good evening.